Can we skip the pledge?
All right, we ready to start? Okay, all right.
I'm taking a picture.
One second.
It's a selfie of everybody.
I do that too.
Will you go?
This will be a Christmas card.
We're live, okay. All right, let's go ahead and kick the meeting off today. April the 14th, Board of County Commission meeting. I will start with the invocation. We've got a couple of standard things we're going to read. And then we've got, we'll roll it over to Mark O'Brien. I'd like to, well, let's just go with the invocation first, how about that? If you pray with me, Father, we ask your blessings now as we begin the important work ahead of us. Bless those elected to serve here with your divine intelligence. Grant us a clarity to see new possibilities and send us fresh energy to pursue them. Give us wisdom, discernment, and good judgment in these uncertain times so that we may serve the best interest and the common good of the people of our county. Father, help us work together to encourage each other to excellence. Help us to challenge each other to reach higher and farther and do the best we can within our resources. Finally, we pray for all those in harm's way and their families. May you especially watch over the first responders and all those in the medical profession who are putting themselves at risk every day for the greater good. Protect them with your abiding presence. We ask this in your name, amen. I don't have a flag, so I think I hate to say we'll skip the pledge if that's okay. And then I've got some standard statements here that I'm going to read relative to the way we're going to run the meeting. So this is the Executive Order 20069, issued by Governor Ron DeSantis on March the 20th, 2020. Authorize local governing bodies, including counties, to conduct meetings without having a quorum physically present or at any specific location. The executive order also authorized the use of communications media technology for virtual meetings such as audio and video conferencing. So I'm going to do a quick roll call around Commissioner Lindley.
Here.
All right, Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Dozier.
I'm here.
Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Proctor.
Here.
And Commissioner Maddox.
Here.
I think I got everybody there, okay. If we, for the record, all commissioners are attending the virtual meeting remotely using Zoom as the cloud platform for video and audio conferencing. If we experience interruptions through disruptions or glitches in the technology being used, I will recess the meeting until the interruption is resolved. If the interruption cannot be resolved in a reasonable amount of time, I will adjourn the meeting. The temporary recess or termination of the meeting, if necessary, is to ensure compliance with the Sunshine Law. I would like to now hand it off to Cassidy Osteen, who is the county attorney, who it also might be noted, this is her first official meeting. So Cassidy, with that, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. So the county issued amended proclamation 2020-7 on April 8th, 2020, in advance of this modified board policy number 1-5, and temporarily established procedures for the county to hold virtual meetings as authorized by Executive Order Number 20-69. The modification of the board policy and temporary procedures were extended in proclamation of continuing local state of emergency 2020-8, which was issued yesterday, Sunday, April 13th, 2020. This virtual meeting was noticed on April 8th, 2020, with information for the public to view the meeting in real time on Comcast Channel 16, Prism Channel 16, and 1016 HD, the county's Facebook page, and YouTube channel. The notice also invited members of the public to submit comment until 8:00 PM yesterday evening via the county's online comment form, and instructions were provided to explain how the public could submit comments. If anyone needed assistance submitting public comments, the notice provided a county phone number as a point of contact. No one contacted the county for a second. The comments submitted through the comment form have been distributed to the commissioners for their consideration prior to any action being taken. These comments have also been posted on the county website so that they can be viewed by members of the public. Comments received after the 8:00 PM deadline were also distributed to the commission and posted on the county website. All comments received will be included in the public record of the meeting.
Great, Cassidy, thank you. Just a couple of ground rules before we get too far. So Mark O'Brien is going to be up next and go through a presentation he's got, give us kind of an update. I'm going to ask just for that presentation that people be muted, and then we'll open it up to questions after that. Because this group, in my opinion, is a little bit more collegial and manageable than the IA meeting a couple of weeks ago. I'm not going to mute everybody. I would just ask that you be mindful of stepping over other people, that you want to be, if you want to be recognized or you want to speak, put there's a hand up thing that's everybody, I think, should be able to use. And I want this to be as fluid of a conversation as we can possibly manage within the technology we've got. But for Mark's presentation, we're going to go ahead and mute everybody and then open it up for questions so he can get through his piece. Mark, Mark O'Brien, CEO Tallahassee Memorial Regional Hospital, it's all yours, take it away.
I can start by giving you some background about some of the work that's been done as we prepared for this, and then kind of give you a state of the union, so to speak, as we stand today. I am sure there's going to be some questions because there are certainly some flags that are waving in our community that are requiring at this point in time a lot of attention and energy. But let me go back, I think everyone has heard at least a little bit about this. We actually anticipated that Tallahassee would be early in the COVID run, mainly due to the many connections with China through the FSH research relationships, the MagLab, et cetera. I think there were a significant number of flights that connected with China and Tallahassee with the first couple of months of the year, and so from that, we thought we would be tagged early on. That was not the case, but it gave us a little bit of a head start. We have a great team here at TMH, quite frankly, some people who think well ahead of the curve on most things. So that gave us the opportunity to start working on some modeling, as well as some structural improvements that would anticipate activity and allow us to create more of an isolation approach to managing COVID. The early thing, one of the early things on was that we were quick to adopt, and when I say we, it was really Chad Moore, Ryan Smith, and a group really looked at how you examined individuals, how you'd go through testing. They looked at the South Korea models in particular and pulled some of the experience out of the state of Washington and started creating a drive-through activities. We tested them here at the hospital in an effort to keep people out of emergency rooms, waiting rooms, et cetera. We tested them, and then we expanded that in a partnership with the community. The city was very helpful in setting that up at Northwood Mall and have been focused on that. We have three drive-through centers here in the community, and Northwood being the community-based center, but we also have one that we maintain at the Bixler Emergency Center and one also at the Northeast. The good news is that Dr. Watson, Dr. Frauley, and a number of other of our medical community have really engaged the rest of the physicians in a very concentrated, focused way so that everybody's following the same guidelines. We are, we were quick to get the physicians to agree to a methodology of identifying symptomatic patients early on before they hit their waiting rooms and had them all agree to a very standard set of guidelines on where they would go, how they would be tested, and how we're getting results back, and how would you manage during the interim period, which has kept a lot of people out of harm's way. I think we have tested well over 1,000, I don't know what the number is now, but I know it's well over 1,000 people at our testing sites. And when you think about it, all of those people who are symptomatic, what that means is that they are not in waiting rooms, whether it's ER, urgent cares, or physician offices, infecting other people. So every time we can isolate an individual to that, that's important. So that was a strong coordinated effort by that. Beyond that, our team was very focused on getting out across the region. You lose control over these, this virus by moving it around, and the more you transport positive individuals, the more you risk spreading the infection. So we were quick to get out in the outlined areas, working with outlined hospitals and training them how to manage COVID patients where they can manage them within their own environments rather than transporting them. One of the levels of, one of the things that they miss that we have is expertise. So using telemedicine, and fortunately Lauren Basin has been a champion of telemedicine. We have been early adopters here in Tallahassee and at TMH and have kind of led that in many respects across the state of Florida. We used that experience and very quickly got out across the region. I think we're in over 25 locations, providing our, providing expertise with our, through our intensivist, our pulmonologist, our infectious, infection prevention folks, et cetera, so people in those communities can manage those patients in their own environment without transporting them here. Of course, there's a higher level of care that's required. We are at the ready, and we've had, we've accepted all of those patients. But the best situation is for people to remain in place as much as possible. So we were, we were quick to engage in that as well. On this side, preparing for what could happen, Bill Gaddice and Mike Willis and our team have been focused on expanding capacity here, looking at layers of expansion, really looking at and trying to make sure we keep disciplined around the best practice, which is through what we call negative pressure rooms, negative pressure environments. What that really means is you're pulling air from the environment of infected people up through a filter and not allowing it to blow out into a common area. So it's exactly what it sounds like. So it's a negative pressure environment, we have high capacity of negative pressure rooms anyway. We built that into our system and have added those over the years. But we have added significantly more capacity to this process by creating wings of negative pressure, also looking at ways in which we can layer into areas that we are not utilizing now as we move into the messaged, and we vacated a lot of space, including former ICU rooms, former surgical spaces. And so we've taken that area and we've already, we've worked with ACHA to make sure we can get immediate waivers if we need to expand in those areas. And we've also accommoded, built some accommodation in those areas to cohort patients so we don't spread those patients out across the organization if indeed we get to that point. That all being said, we haven't seen that activity at this point. We hope not to see that activity, but we recognize by looking at the Albany experience that it, you can very quickly become overwhelmed and not have the capacity to engage in that level of care. So we've been, we've been trying to build ours up to, in fact, provide the best level of support possible if indeed we had an outbreak of that level. So just from a technology standpoint, well, from a PPE standpoint, we've been buying up supplies as we could get them. We've been identifying, we've been expanding our supply chain vendor list. We've just got some big shipments from China, and so we're up to a pretty healthy supply load right now, which is good, but if you get a big outbreak, it can burn through it pretty quickly. Likewise, we have been expanding our technologies and have figured out how to manage two to four people on ventilators, which could give us the capacity to have as many as 800 people on ventilators if we need to, if that, if we got to that point. Again, we are not at that point. I've also worked with the community, and I think everyone is aware of this, and I appreciate all of your help in trying to get the message out to stay in place, to abide by the rules. It really does have an impact. I think this last weekend with Easter, being Easter weekend, I'm not sure how, well, I'm sure it made a big difference. I'm not sure if there were events where people still gathered, but for the most, I think the message got out pretty clearly that you should stay home, pray at home, worship at home, because it's the gatherings that give ample opportunity to spread the virus. So there are a lot, and there are a lot of public efforts still going on. What we're trying to do, the modeling, a lot of the academic centers, and we've tagged them as well, have used the CHIME model. You have to understand, all the models that are out there are really, none of them are 100% accurate because we really don't know. There are variables that we're learning every day. We've all hoped that weather, in particular, the seasonal warming temperatures, as well as humidity, would have an impact, it appears that there is an impact of that. I don't think it's going to get rid of the virus, but it certainly seems to be having an impact on how it spreads. That's a good thing because the longer we can stretch this out, again, as we talk about flattening the curve, the longer we can stretch this out, the more advantage we will have as a community, especially here in Florida, of having the heat and humidity really kind of drive that down and make this a much more manageable process. But again, what we're trying to avoid is the big event, the Albany-type crisis that's scarring that community, and that's where we're having some challenges. We've had, when we've looked at our numbers per capita up until the last few days, we've had a very enviable position of being significantly under other metropolitan communities in Florida and throughout the Southeast. Maybe the lowest metropolitan community in Florida, certainly one of the lowest in the Southeast. We're seeing that number change, unfortunately. It's doubled and the number is more than, it's doubled and will significantly more than double just in the last few days as we get results coming in for the next, in the few days moving forward. But we're trying to manage that situation and keep the rest of the community safe.
Mark, let me just start by saying thanks. You and your team, this has been, I don't think anybody could have ever anticipated that you guys would be on the front line like this. So let me just say from the county standpoint, we couldn't ask for a better partner. So thanks for all your work. I'll open it up to questions. I just ask that you be mindful of when somebody steps in the void, let them speak, and then we'll go from there.
Sure.
Our commissioners.
I raised a hand.
Okay, Commissioner Lindley, who is a Duke, I see, I see the hands now, okay. And then I've got Commissioner Minor, thank you.
The little three dots in the corner. Yeah, I just wondered if you do feel fully prepared with the PPE equipment for everybody on the staff, not just the people who are writing, but everybody in the hospital who in their offices or the maintenance, everybody that would be seeing ostensibly people who might be contagious. Just how, you said you're getting more supplies, some have come in from China, but you could expend those pretty quickly if you get an outbreak. So are you kind of feeling a little trepidation about having enough of that equipment? Thanks.
At this point, hi, Mary. No, we're actually feeling pretty good about where we stand. I think, I don't have, we go through this, we have a COVID huddle every morning, we engage everybody in all parts and then go through a systematic review afterwards, kind of analyzing where we need to improve, et cetera. We're, we, I don't, we have, I would say several weeks of supply of, several weeks' worth of supplies in the major areas of masks and gowns. And it is our job to protect all of our colleagues here, including those not just on, at the bedside, not just the nurses, the respiratory therapists, the PCAs, the CNAs, and all of those, but it's also our job to protect those who are also here to keep the place clean, which is important. When you think about the role of environmental services, you know, they reduce the chance of infection and spread of infection by keeping it clean. So we have to protect them as well. We have to protect our dietary staff. So yes, we have, when we talk about our focus on infection prevention and keeping our staff safe, it's all of our, it's all of our staff, it's the entire TMH family.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, thank you very much for the update, really appreciate it. This is not a fair question because you have virtually no control over it, but I want to hear your thoughts, and perhaps someone from the emergency management team at the county might be able to also pipe in. Around the country, we've seen a lot of concern about disparities in recovery rates by ethnicity. African-Americans in particular have, seem to be passing away at a higher ratio than those other ethnicities. Now, I've looked at the, for Department of Health, daily reports, which are very comprehensive. They've got a lot of detail in there, but they don't list or provide any type of insight on ethnicity. Do you know, have you heard anything about Department of Health providing that type of information for the state of Florida, for the counties and for us? I think it's, while I think in Leon County, I know everyone's working in good faith, and I know that, but from a public perception standpoint, it's helpful, I think, to be transparent with that information, recognizing that it doesn't come from you or TMH or CRMC, but it does come from FDoh.
Yeah, Rick, I would tell you, the good thing about Florida, especially relative to other states, it's a very data-rich state. They collect a lot of information, which seems a little tedious to us at times, but it ends up being a valuable tool on the back end. So I am sure that information is out there. I'm not sure we've seen any significant reports coming out of that yet, but I will tell you this, and this is, it's just straight up common sense. Your health status going into an event, into a fight with COVID or any other communicable disease, infectious disease, your health status going in is going to have an impact on your ability to recover and get beyond it. And when you have a population that has, that is, that has a lot of comorbidities inherent with it, whether it's COPD, or CHF, or diabetes, or anything of that nature, if you have a population that has a higher number as a percentage of those comorbidities, you're going to have, you're going to have, you know, you're going to have poor results. And we all know that there are health disparities in the state. A lot of it is socio-economic in nature. And it's, you know, I think this is, it's, it just indicates the importance, as we talk about Tallahassee and Leon County, we have to recognize that this is also a play in the economic disparities we see in our community. If we want to have a successful community, it has to be a successful community as a whole, not as its component parts. So anyway, that would be my little ramble of the moment. Like I say, most of this is really common sense stuff.
Good. Go ahead, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that makes total sense. And once again, I'll reiterate, it's not within your scope of influence on that, but I would like to see from FDoh a reporting about this. I think that type of transparency sends a signal to the public that we are being open and out and honest with these stats. I don't know how we go about that as a county, but I know it's something that I imagine would be helpful to the public as well as us to see that. So, but Mark, thank you very much.
If you go to Florida charts, there's that information, there's a lot of information already available to you, the public, if you're willing to dig into it.
Good stuff, okay. Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mark. How are you doing, Mark?
Good, Bill, how are you doing?
Real good, real good. I appreciate your hard work, y'all's efforts out there at TM. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Very, very good. Mark, there's been a, the assessment nationwide with respect to our health industry has been the issue of communications or the lack of organized communication. And as we look in the community, I'm somewhat aware of TMH's efforts singular, but with respect to your frontline gladiators, Bond Community Health Center and Neighborhood Health Center being out there in the heart of what today's newspaper cited as the loaded ZIP codes, 32304, they're down there in the trenches with where the major cases are located. In terms of you all's protocols, interactions, sharing of data, information, processes which allow for more serious need for treatment, are you all making sure that our community is a lot more excellent than the lack of protocols that are shared in other parts of America with respect to health agencies that are interacting?
I'll tell you, Bill, this is, this is one area where we as a community should be proud of how our healthcare partners have come together. You know, TMH gets a lot of credit because we're the asset. We're, I mean, that's, that's our role. But, but this has been, this has been an excellent model of how all the organizations bond, you know, you talk about Dr. Robinson, Neighborhood, Ms. Freeman, you talk about TPCA, CHP, Capital Regional. This is one area, and in some, in some cases, it's very specific to certain events, in some cases, it's tied to broad services overall, but the group in general has been very communicative, communicative, very participative and collaborative. And that's the one thing that this group has banded together, not competed with each other across systems, and basically have tried as much as possible to complement each other. I think everybody's tagged into the community, drawing stations, the Northwood Centers, et cetera. All of us have made sure that we've approached that and partnered in that. And that's one where the Neighborhood and Bond in particular have participated in providing staff in that, for that effort. It really is been very refreshing to watch and gives me a lot of faith in the people who work here, not just institutions, but the people within the institutions.
Great. I'm really glad to hear that, and I'm sure that the county commissioners are glad to hear of that kind of collaboration. I want also to ask you, given the potential for the Leon County Jail being a death trap or a death camp, what protocols have you all established with Leon County Jail? I understand that employees have brought COVID into the jail. Y'all have a protocol with these inmates? And also today, there's in our today's paper, concern about persons who are trapped? And what is, what is the arrangement there?
A good zillion steps, and I did one of the last hurdles. Our responsibility, of course, is to provide for the higher levels of care when needed, but the majority of patients, quite frankly, with COVID can be managed in place, either in the home or in a lower community environment. So that's where you should stay if you can because it keeps people isolated. If there is an event where a person requires ventilator-assisted care, ICU level of care, or that higher level, then that's where we would tag in. But up until that point, the best place to keep people, to protect other people, is to keep them in place. So just to let you know, that's the approach that we're taking, and it seems to be the standard approach across most medical communities.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, and there's no question that the inmates are locked in place. They sincerely are probably society's most in-place people. It's the guards that are not, and the guards are coming back to inmates who are in place. And I just, I want to recommend, Mark, not belabor the point that in the network collaboration that we include a special concern for the jail and the inmates there and the personnel if you all, if you can accommodate it. If you can't, then of course, we get that. My final ask, Mr.
Going back to that, just if I can make one comment, Bill. The best, I mean, again, the best thing to do for everybody involved, including the inmates who are positive, is to stay in place if they can. Only when you require a higher level of care would you transport. But as it relates to, as it relates to the people who work in the jails and the prisons, what they should be doing is protecting themselves and their, and the people who they serve in those prisons by using good infection prevention protocols. I mean, the one thing most people don't realize, when you wear a mask, unless it's an N95, and the N95 is designed to protect you, the individual, from infection, but all other masks, surgical mask, even cotton mask, they're designed not to protect you, but to protect everybody else from you. And they should be requiring in those situations, they should be monitoring their staff every day, doing whatever it takes, whether it's temperatures, making sure that symptomatic people stay home, not allowing symptomatic people not allowing symptomatic people to show up. But even then, if, if, if the level of concern has risen that high, what they should do is require the staff to wear masks. And that way, they will prevent them from spreading, spreading the virus to other people.
My last question, Mr. Chairman, if I might, just one more for Mark. Mark, I wanted to ask you, and you indicated that test centers have been set up, drive-by at Northwood Mall, Bixler, and in the northeast somewhere.
Yes, sir.
What's, what is the possibility that we can have a walk-up clinic or a show-up clinic where many people in the urban core ride the bus and they don't have cars? And it's come to my awareness that you also have to have a physician's recommendation sending you to get checked and tested. And consistent with my ask of you right now is the fact that you've indicated that as more, as more results come in, the numbers keep increasing. But I have a population that don't drive, a population who, without a primary physician, and they're being disqualified from being tested. You think possibly that, out of all that you're doing, and I dare not pile on, but possibly someone like Big Ben Cares, We Care could be a site for a, just a show-up station so that that would be a site made accessible to the urban core in addition to the three sites that you've cited? That's my last question.
That would be a good question for Big Ben Carers or an organization like that. I, I'll, I'll check on the walk, walk-ups, because I do think that they are, they're trying to keep people in cars because it's an isolated environment. You can keep within a car. They might be accommodating the walk-ups. I'd have to check to make sure. But Bill, the, the thing about the physician, here, here's what they, anybody should do. If they don't have a physician, but they're symptomatic, they need to call the Bond Center or Neighborhood or a health clinic that can, that they can share the symptoms and get back with them. I will tell you, we're not, we're not, this is not for open, because we just don't want it to be a drive-up for anybody, because we want it to be created through the medical community. And the reason why is because everybody needs to start with a physician relationship. But there are, there are situations where people don't have a physician. So if they show up at the drive-through at Northwood, for example, and they are symptomatic, we do have actually a screening process where we tag them by telemedicine to a physician through one of our residency programs or another vehicle, where a physician can make an assessment and make an order at that point in time. So if you're showing up there symptomatic and don't have a physician, we can, we will make an accommodation for that and allow the physician then to decide whether the patient needs an order or not. But the reason why we strongly, strongly encourage the people to connect with a clinic or their physician practice and not just show up randomly is because, once they get their result back, it's that that patient and that physician needs to manage their health on a moving forward basis. We need for that relationship to be the principal relationship on how a patient is managed moving forward. Does that make sense?
Sure. And I just, my final comment is just to say that the protocol which you've outlined, it certainly excludes a number of people. And I do understand medically what you're saying and why you're saying it that way. But it seems like we need to have a traveling team going to areas where they will not qualify with physician assistance or recommendation and whereby they can't contain themselves with cars. So that is a hole that hopefully in the coming days, we can spend attention. And it may need funding to, expanded funding to cover, but we're leaving significant part of our community out by the criteria which we've set. I appreciate it, Mr. O'Brien, all you're doing. If I can personally be helpful to you all in any way, just give me a call. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Okay, I've got Commissioner Dozier and then Commissioner Jackson up. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Mark. You are one of the busiest men in town right now, along with some other folks on this screen. And I know, I'm just echoing my colleague's comments, but thank you very much for all your efforts and for your just amazing staff and coordination with CMRC and the other healthcare providers. Really appreciate it. Couple of just follow-ups. The, you mentioned you were in a good place for right now with supplies. I did see your email come out about needing more assistance. You've now got a way for people to donate and that can support purchasing other equipment and testing, if I read that correctly. We're all hearing about the supply chain bottleneck. So do you feel like we're, we started this a little ahead of some other communities that got impacted in the last few weeks? And so we're in a better position because the supply chain might be catching up? And then related to that, you're taking in some donated masks and other things that are made locally? And just how's that working? That's my first question for you.
First question about the mask, the mask nation.
Well, the mask.
Our supply chain in general.
But supply chain in general, I mean, you're, you're looking for donations to buy more. You said a few minutes ago that you were, you've got some in your stocks preparing for.
Right.
Increased caseload. So do you think our, the delay in our peak of this is going to help? Because we're going to be able to get more supplies in?
We're hoping so. Part of the issue of supplies is that we recognize there are needs even beyond here. We're, we're helping to supply our outline hospitals as well. You know, you think about the critical access hospitals out in Blountstown and Appalachia Cola and Madison and places like that. They need, and they, they need support. And so we're trying to provide some support to them as well. As far as the supply chains are concerned, a lot of the supply chains were frozen because they, we, we as a, I think as a, as an industry have been highly reliant, like many areas, on China as a producer of, of supplies. What we're seeing is that that supply chain seems to be reopening. And the thing about it is it reopens, it's not an automatic push over here. It will take them a while to gear completely back up and bring their production lines. I know the US production lines are probably working at capacity or, and probably even try to expand as much as they can. But as China reopens, you know, you have to start thinking about just the logistics. You know, it takes so, so long to produce it. You can, you can air cargo, air freight a certain amount over here, but that's not a way to, to overall meet the supply demands of a nation our size. So at some point, you have to produce enough and put it on container ships, ship over here and then go through the distribution process, which is usually a four to six week cycle. So we're guessing, my guess, this is a personal guess, is that we're going to start seeing the criticality around PPE will start, starting to lighten up around the first of May as we start getting some of the, the overseas production capacity impacting our, our supply chain. As far as the cloth mask, you know, we're, we're using, we're taking those and putting them in, in place and people who are working in, in the non-direct patient care areas as a, as a protection mechanism for everyone else. And that's what we appreciate, but we're not using those as clinical, as clinical shields, so to speak. We're relying upon FDA-approved vehicles and things that we know are, are designated prevention infection, uh, equipment and supplies in those, in those situations. So we're not using those, but they are helpful as it relates to the non-direct patient care staff and protecting them from everyone else. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I, I saw a nurse or technician walking into TMH. I was just going out for a walk, I promise, nothing else. And she was wearing one of the homemade masks. And I thought that, that really struck me, that she was wearing one of those masks on her way into the hospital and assuming that she would step it up once she got in and was taking care of patients. So I'm glad that's helpful. Thank you for the answer about that. And you touched on one other thing, and I don't know, think you need to go into this again, but Vince, you've mentioned in your updates how well you all are coordinating regionally. And I really appreciate that. I think we all do. We all know that a year and a half after Michael, are we still a year and a half now? We still have challenges in the region from the hurricane. And that definitely impacted healthcare. So this is even more critical that we're kind of helping our, our other counties, you know, our neighboring counties. So thank you for that. One other question I had for you, I'm starting to get, hear more chatter about the essential workers. And I think this is something that we could probably draw out of the previous questions because so many of our essential workers are hourly wage workers, they're low income. We've seen one Publix employee, two Whole Foods employees now test positive. Should we be stepping up? And when I'm saying this, I think we've all done a great job trying to encourage the community to wear masks to protect others and things like that. But is this the point where even essential workers should be wearing those masks to protect themselves, protect others, whether they're landscaping or construction or at the grocery store? Are we hitting that point?
Well, I certainly think it doesn't hurt and probably does help a fair amount. And I think it's the recommendation now that if you're in a public area, you mentioned the nurse walking into the hospital. I imagine she or he recognized the value of wearing a mask like that in a public environment. And then when they came here in the hospital, they would put on their protective environment. But, but yeah, I, I think we should all encourage people to wear masks if they have them in the, in a public environment. Sure.
Okay. The last thing, just increased testing. I mean, at some point, we're going to have to see more testing. We're hearing this nationwide. The rapid testing for your staff, for other healthcare providers, are we starting to see that? Are we, are we going to see an increase in testing in this area? Or are we just really waiting like everyone else in the country?
Well, it goes back, it's, it's important to test symptomatic patients. When you have a limited testing capacity, there's no, there really makes no, little sense to test asymptomatic individuals. If you don't, if you're not sick and we test you and you, we show that you don't have COVID, that doesn't mean you're not going to get it next week or next, the next day. So to test people who may not have it doesn't mean that they're not going to get it. But we do want to test people who we think might. The, the, the numbers that we're seeing is about one out of 10 people we're testing are testing positive. That means that nine other people, they're not showing up if they're not symptomatic. They have symptoms, but they don't have COVID. And that's what we're trying to determine, who has COVID and who has just the regular flu. You know, we can manage the flu differently. So the faster we can test people who are symptomatic, the better off we are. The challenge that we've had in the industry is limited testing capacity as it relates to getting the results back. Up until, now we're, we're getting results back from the major labs in about three to five days, four to five days, for lucky three days. We have some lab relationships where we're getting them back within 24 to 48 hours. But you have to think about that. The longer people don't know they have it, quite frankly, the, probably the less aggressive they are in managing it. But also inside the hospital, we treat everybody who is symptomatic like a COVID patient, going through PPE, burning through all of those supplies, until we know if they do or don't. If they do, we continue with that. If they don't, we can stop. But we, but until we find out for certain, we are wasting supplies. Now, we have the capacity here. We have a, a very high-end analyzer, a piece of equipment that could test. I think we have the capacity to do 1,000 tests a day with, and, and have results within two to three hours, which would be ideal. I mean, that would be great. The problem is, is that we don't have the reagents, the chemicals, basically to conduct those tests. And the reason why is because they're, again, in an environment where people weren't really prepared for this, at least to the extent that it, that we have it. The reagents are being sent to high-demand areas, New York, Detroit, New Orleans, those types of communities. So we are getting, we're now starting to get some limited testing reagents in, but very limited. Not enough to do broad testing across the community. We anticipate that will improve over time. But it's, but the, the issue is not just, it's not really broad testing as much as it is timely, testing timeliness. And that's what we're more interested in than anything else.
Thank you. I know that was a lot of things, as the others had said, that are out of your control necessarily right now, but we're hearing a lot in the news. And the reagents is something that's really stood out to me, that we could have had that at health departments or hospitals earlier on. And I, I hope you can get those resources soon. So, Mark, again, thanks for.
Well, it's not, it's not as simple as ordering. There's, there's an allocation process. That's one of those that you just can't go out and, and order two barrels of reagents. They, they allocate it to you, so.
Let me, if I, if I said that, I did not mean to say that. I know it's an allocation from others. It was just my understanding that, that could.
It would have been nice to have a national stockpile of reagents. That's true.
Right. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner Dozier. I've got Commissioner Jackson and then Commissioner Proctor back up. Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Mark, it's Jimbo Jackson. How are you doing?
Yeah, how you doing, Jimbo?
Doing great. Hey, I got just a couple of things and I'll try to be quick. I know we've given you quite a lot to think about. But has anything changed significantly, in your opinion, since the April 8th report? And while we're talking about the April 8th report, if you'll allow me to indulge, I can't tell you how I have relied on it. And even in our local public school system, we have used it as kind of a, a, a marker for behaviors in our public school campuses. It's kind of changed the way that we've done work, and I think it has been for the better. But is there anything that's changed significantly in your projections? At one time, we were talking in those numbers there, 1,500 to possibly 3,000 patients by the third week of June from not only Tallahassee, but you even mentioned it surrounding counties. Is there anything that's changed significantly over the last five or six days that would, that would impact that, other than that we have paid attention and it's kind of given us a great wake-up call?
Yeah, well, in the last few days, there have been a couple of things that have changed. One is that, that was, those numbers are based upon the CHIME modeling methodology. That's coming from the University of Pennsylvania. And again, that's stretching it out, not recognizing other variables. What we, what we are seeing, Jimbo, is that we do believe that there is an impact of weather and humidity on the virus. And we're seeing patterns of spread that differentiate the trajectory of, of spread in, in cooler, less humid environments versus warmer, warming environments. And that's what we're seeing. We're seeing the summer, the summer temperatures, spring to summer temperatures start creeping up. Does seem to be having an impact. So that's good. That is a good thing. And so we're getting a little bit more experience with that and looking at other communities. I do think that the overall is very good over, I mean, comparatively speaking, over the, over the Easter weekend break. I think that could have been much worse. I think the church is engaged in a lot of communications across the region. Our church leaders in particular, I think, were very vocal and took a, a strong leadership role and, and really kind of setting the stage on, on how we should worship. And I think that, that there was a lot that, who knows how many people, fewer, might get this because of those efforts. That's, that's what we, we won't know is how many people actually have been positively impacted by that. What we, what has changed in our environment is the outbreak that we've seen at the Tallahassee Developmental Center. And that's the part that is, that we're trying to manage and get our hands around. And that is a very difficult environment right now. That's why you see our numbers, you know, we were bouncing up a few every day, which, which we anticipated because you have to recall that the numbers coming in were on, were basically on a delay. Testing was being done at the different sites. The non-hospital-based ones were on a slower delay at, at one point, eight to 10 days before we got results. So if we basically did a test, say, on April 1st, we wouldn't get a result until April 9th, April 10th. And that's when it got logged in. So we knew we were on a delay. So we knew we were on a delay. But all of a sudden, last week, I think we were probably in the mid 70s towards the end of last week and already we're 150. And I will tell you, that number is going to climb pretty rapidly, just in the last few days. And that's come through the, the, the activity over at the Tallahassee Developmental Center. And that's the part that, again, we're trying to, that's a very concentrated population. We're trying to get our hands around it. Half of the, half of the COVIDs in our community come from that one specific community between residents and employees.
Yeah, so the, so the worry, it kind of segues into my next concern, which is both assisted living facilities and dependent care facilities having, not, not just a layman's experience, but personal experience. I know we've engaged those providers and I've noticed a real uptick in the way that, for example, assisted living facilities are working with our elderly because they are obviously one of the more vulnerable of our populations. So if we can somehow message that, and I know you're, I know you guys are doing an interesting thing, but if there is some way to engage them differently or something that we can do as a county, I don't know what that would be, but it's definitely something that needs to be on our minds as we continue down this road to, to kind of stopping the spread. One last question, and that concerns our food distribution sites and the way that they bring people together that is for a good reason, to feed hungry children and hungry families. But are those something that you have looked at or that any of your staff has encountered or studied?
Actually, yes. We, we got engaged last week. I know that Sheriff McMill's been involved in this as well. Talked to Monique Ellsworth in particular with Second Harvest. What they are doing and what they, they're following certain guidelines. They are wearing PPE, a limited amount. But what they're doing is they're doing a drive-through. They're putting the, the, the supplies, the food supplies on a table and they're staying with, you know, out of reach of those individuals. And then on top of that, according to Monique, they're keeping their working staff to 10 or under in each of those locations. So they're, they're trying to do the social distancing with the drive-through structure, even with, when it comes to getting the groceries, the, the food stuff. They're keeping the distance between them and the people who are giving it to them. They're just not walking up and handing it to them in the car. They're putting it at the end of the table, pushing the table up. People are taking it, they're pulling it back, putting it back, and then pushing it forward again. So they're, they're doing their best and we think they're using reasonable precautions while also doing good and, and meeting a need in our community.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know that we have 18 separate sites here that are doing it every day. And then of course, Monique runs kind of a centered sites with Second Harvest in different communities. I just don't know if there's any further advice that we need to be giving folks in regards to them.
I think, I think Sheriff McMill has, has taken kind of personal ownership in this area, in this area, and is providing some, maybe not formal, but certainly informal oversight to make sure that people are, are using logical precautions.
Okay. Thanks again. Thank your staff. We can't thank you enough for everything you've done to keep us on top of it. And the April 8th report has definitely had an impact in my conversations as I speak to those folks here and countywide. So thanks again, Mark. Appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you. Likely the, the projections we, what we were trying to show more than anything else is what would happen if there was a major outbreak, what could happen.
Right.
Thanks, Commissioner Jackson. I've got Commissioner Proctor up next.
Okay, thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Mark, thank you very much. You're doing a good job. We, we return to you as one of our titan leaders in a moment like this. I wanted to ask what the people in your, your COVID circle, I've gone by drive, prominent drive-up windows and workers are not wearing masks or gloves and handling food, which are being handed out of the windows. Would you, would you recommend this, the nature of this disease that relative to this emergenic crisis we're experiencing, should the county pass an ordinance requiring workers who are handling food out of the windows to wear masks and gloves? Would you all have a recommendation about soap and water or paper towels or those kind of smaller things that we don't think about?
Do you want to drive through restaurants?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, that is, yeah, I'm, I am a, I'm a, I'm not an expert in most, in much of anything, I would think. I know a lot about a lot of things, but infection prevention, we have experts in that field. That's one of those, Commissioner Proctor, that I, I would hate to be the vocal authority on that, but I will tell you that it, that is an area where it probably makes some sense for whoever has the opportunity to influence that, to pull in individuals who have infection prevention skills, backgrounds and, 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 and experience to provide some input. I, I, that, that wouldn't be a bad idea to pull someone in who actually understands that to provide some thought. But it wouldn't be just the people at the drive-throughs. You're also talking about the people who prepare the food. That's just, that's, that's probably as much if not more of a exposure point. But, but the whole thing there probably wouldn't be a bad idea to at least have some basic guidelines on food preparation and distribution.
Okay. Well, let me just indicate that after standing in line a long time, I recognized and saw through the window that there were no masks and no gloves by people handling. And I was, I, I stood in line, but I had to pass that, that establishment. And I commented and asked that they would pass it up the line, that in times like these, as just one patron, I would appreciate gloves and, and stuff like that. And just mask for food workers, period, in, in a moment like this, Commissioners. And I would ask our county attorney, Attorney Osteen, if she would give consideration to potentially any CDC protocols with regard to food handling. We all saw Smithfield operations and how many people in South Dakota handling food kind of makes you think of the Tallahassee Developmental Center, except they're handling food which we consume. But county attorney, I would, I would, I'm one Commissioner who would appreciate your sharing with the Commission if there are any protocols from CDC or ACHA, anyone like that regarding masks and containing the virus. Also, I think Commissioners, from what I've heard discussed coming from Mr. O'Brien today, is that there is a need for us to augment the drive-up testing and to, we need some walk-up testing. And from what I've heard from Mr. O'Brien, as well as to have read in your, your April 3rd presentation on the COVID model for epidemics, some of it is well beyond what I understand, Mark. But I do understand that there are three drive-up sites at Northwood Mall, Dixler, and Northeast. That's insufficient, is insufficient to whether the numbers are indicating the most intense expansion and spread of the virus. It's insufficient to our recognition of the number of people who can't drive and the numbers of persons who are not without positions that they can call and call them their primary position. So it kind of leads me to ask if, for those persons who are volunteering and coming out to your sites now, that has to strain, it has to put a strain on the volunteer, volunteering agencies and how are we accommodating the cost? And I think that if there is the surge that you mentioned, Mark, the surge potential, and that surge could reoccur if state government and other things are open, we bring people back. That surge could occur certainly when we bring students back into this community and making sure that your protocols of FAMU, FSU, TCC, physician offices and student clinics, all of that stuff is arranged. But it, it probably needs to be a check, some money shared with supporting agencies in this work and that the, the, the trench fighters, clinics and other medical providers can easily be wore out because they don't have the war chest to fight, which TMH and some of the bigs may have. And I think that from, from the equity standpoint, we got to focus on money, even if TMH needs our help. If, if that surge occurs, I, Commissioners don't have any problems helping TMH fight. I don't have any problems likewise of asking any other entity to fight the good fight. And our job as Commissioners to provide for the health, safety and wealth there of our community encompasses all of these things that we're, we're mentioning. Finally, I, I think that, and what I've heard today and what I've observed from afar, is that, Mark, we have in, in church stuff, something called street ministry, when churches go outside of the stained glass windows and go into communities to proselytize and, and to meet people where they are. But I think that this is a moment where we need something like street medicine. And, and, and I don't know how expensive that is, but there are people who don't have cars, they can't drive up to a test site, they don't have doctors. Is there any possibility for a new model of outreach that goes and meets people at street level? Commissioners, you all remember at the IE meeting the last time, and I indicated that I felt we would be wise to foster street literature, street outreach, street education, street and meeting folk and telling folk and putting stuff in the language that people could understand. I'm, I'm guilty, I'm on record of having made that suggestion. But I want just to know, Mark, and I know medicine has high protocols, but in, in emergency situations, can we do a street situation for people who are not going to meet that, those, those standards of which are traditional and would are recommended now? That's my last question.
Well, actually, we can, we can go one step further above that, Commissioner Proctor. The, the reality is, is that we really don't want people to get out on the street either in a situation like this if they're, if they're positive, because any time they're out, they can spread the disease. So we don't want them on the street. But when I say we, we can go one step further, is one of the advantages of this is that even though we've talked about telemedicine as a vehicle to provide care for years, we really haven't had legislative support to open up the door for payments. So it's one of those things, even though we've technic, from a technical standpoint, have had the ability to use telemedicine, no one's been able to be reimbursed for it. But with COVID-19, those rules have been changed dramatically. We don't know if they're going to be permanently, if they're permanently, permanently going to remain in place, or if this is temporary, but for now at least. And we do think that will be more permanent than temporary. We can provide medical care through telemedicine, which means basically not, not even going outside. We're talking about using a smartphone to engage with physicians and medical, other medical providers to provide some level of support. So, so rather than on the street, we're talking about couch. How about couch or bedside medicine? That's even better. Keeping people indoors away from others and then treating them through smartphone technologies. And the good news is today, most everybody has access to a smartphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I've got Commissioner Lindley.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Just a quick comment. I think when we get to item 15, if we ever do, we will be seeing Bond Clinic, who is doing a lot of testing as well, which affects a lot of folks on the south side. So just for people who are watching this, we'll probably be discussing that in a little while. And I really do appreciate, Mark's been championing telemedicine for probably 20 years, trying to get the legislature to support a way for that to be financially viable as well as a convenience for patients. So I appreciate that. I know you've made progress and we're getting there. Thanks a lot, Mark, on that front as well. Thanks.
You're welcome. If you see Lauren Dozier, I mean, if you see Lauren face in Clark, just give her a pat on the back because she really is, there's no champion more telemedicine than, than she is.
I've heard her, I've heard her advocacy in many instances. She's fantastic. Thanks, Lauren.
Mark, let me echo everybody's comments and say thanks. And then I'm going to hang it off, hand it off to the county administrator, but you guys have been rock stars throughout all this, so we appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Just before we let Mark go, I just wanted to not miss the opportunity to, to thank Mark. You all heard Mark say it in terms of how our healthcare providers locally have, have stepped up and I, in our, and you'll hear from Claudia and you'll hear from Kevin soon. But I think now in our 35th or 36th day of, of activation as emergency management, the leadership of, of Mark and TMH and Allen and CRMC and our clinics and our specialty providers, you name it, has been instrumental in our planning and preparation and, and implementation and coordination with state EM. So I just didn't want to miss the opportunity, Mark, to thank you for all that.
Yeah, just also, just a big shout out to Chief Abrams and Leon County EMS. They're on the front lines. They're, they're out there as much as anybody and they're doing a great job. We could not, we cannot be doing what we do without them.
All right, Mark, thanks again. Okay, next up, consent.
Consent. Move consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item pulled from consent. That's item number nine pulled by Commissioner Minor.
Commissioner Minor, you want to address that before we go through?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I must abstain from voting on agenda item number nine because of a voting conflict. My wife is a Realtor and she has a client that's interested in purchasing a home potentially in Fletch Oak subdivision. So therefore I must abstain. And I make the motion to approve the remaining agenda items of consent.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the remaining items on consent. Any other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And then I'd, I'd entertain a motion for the remaining one abstaining with, without Commissioner Minor.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. I heard of the motion come from Commissioner Maddox. Second come from Commissioner Lindley.
I think it was Dozier.
Oh, Commissioner Dozier. It's very difficult to try.
I think we're all in there together. We're good.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second with Commissioner Minor being held out, recusing himself. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, that's our consent agenda, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, and, and that brings us to your general business agenda. Item number 11, Commissioners, is a status report on Leon County's response efforts related to COVID-19. Before we get started with that, let me just advise you that we had four comments, public comments distributed to the board on this item. Those comments have been posted to the website and entered into the public record and the official record of this meeting. Commissioners, this item provides a status report again on the county's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. As discussed throughout this item, and as you know from your stat, your, your daily status updates that you've been receiving, our response has been an organization-wide effort. The pandemic has impacted virtually everything we do in, in county government. That's saying a lot. Our staff throughout the organization has been fully immersed in our response efforts for the past several weeks plus now. You'll hear from several of these people in the overview today, and they represent hundreds more county workers and thousands more organizations, people representing organizations in our community that we've been working with tirelessly on this effort. Just a few moments ago, you heard from Mark O'Brien, of course, and how our local healthcare providers responding, which has been critical. In a moment, Commissioners, you're going to hear from Claudia Blackburn about how all of that relates to our efforts to plan and prepare for a surge in hospital healthcare needs. And again, I know that's something that Mark addressed, but from Claudia's shot. And again, I know that's something that Mark addressed. Um but uh from Claudia's shop, uh you can hear directly from her on many of the efforts that are taking place there uh with respect to planning uh and uh additionally um modeling as well. You'll also hear from Kevin Peters about our efforts at the EOC, uh again, which has been activated for thirty-six consecutive days now and counting uh to coordinate our efforts in response to uh and our response partners at the local, regional and state. And Kevin will fill you in uh on that. I'm asking all of these folks to just uh take less than five minutes to hit the high points uh and so that you all can uh Commissioners can ask any questions that you might have, because we've got quite a list of speakers uh and presenters here. I'm gonna then turn it over to Shinkton Lammy, who um you'll hear from Shinkton about how we're addressing the needs of some of our most vulnerable populations in the community, including our homeless. Uh Allen Rosen's wife will then uh discuss the anticipated fiscal app, uh the the anticipated fiscal impact uh to the county associated with the pandemic and how we plan to approach that uh in the current year as well as uh in the upcoming budget cycle. Uh Andy Johnson will provide an update, Commissioners, on the latest developments at the congressional level as well as the federal assistance uh that is now becoming available. Uh you'll hear from Matt Cavell about our extensive extensive public information efforts um and how uh we're keep keeping our community well informed and prepared throughout this. Um you just uh heard a reference to Chief Abrams. I'm gonna ask Chief Abrams to talk a little bit about the critical role that EMS uh continues to fulfill throughout this time. We're gonna hand it off to Christina Paredes uh and and Christina's gonna talk a little bit about uh the CEDAR program, but we won't spend much time understanding that uh we have the IA meeting tomorrow dedicated to to that and and related topics. Uh Wanda Hunter will then come up and um and talk about how we are maintaining our county workforce to ensure uh that the county remains uh able to continue providing essential services to our community throughout uh this time. And finally, uh you're gonna hear from Chastity Osteen, uh the county attorney, who has been um entirely dedicated to making sure uh that our efforts remain in sync uh with the executive orders and the declarations uh that are coming from the state uh and the federal government. Uh Commissioners, the agenda item before you contains uh everything that you'll hear about uh from this uh quick sort of uh round uh um uh robin uh and uh but in but in a lot more detail. Uh before I hand it off to Claudia, I wanted to take just a moment to thank county staff who continue to demonstrate their professionalism and their dedication uh throughout this time. They've adapted, uh Commissioners, in in a lot of different ways through this crisis, and I'm grateful uh for everything that they're doing uh and continuing to do in delivering the services, uh delivering our services to the community. I want to also thank the board for your support throughout this. And um I have to give special thanks uh to our chairman uh who's been uh available and accessible um throughout this time. And I'd also like to thank our constitutional officers uh who have really stepped up and and the coordination that we are uh experiencing uh with them uh has been tremendous, as well as so many other community partners. Uh so Commissioners, if we could ask uh that you hold your questions, given the format today, until the end, again, we're just gonna hit the high points, and there'll be plenty of opportunity for you to ask any questions that you might have. And with that, I'll hand it off to Claudia.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to stop and collect my thoughts and the work of the Leon County Health Department. And um yes, I'd like to give a shout out to my team, many of whom have worked for forty-five days straight now. And so we're all just a little slap happy. Um not not too happy, just uh just tired. Department of Health has five objectives, and I'm gonna talk through each one of them. I might need one extra minute, but I'll try to talk fast. Uh our first objective is to stop the introduction of COVID nineteen into our community. Through this, by investigating every case, tracing every contact, and working to contain outbreaks. Thus far in the state of Florida, there have been twenty thousand three hundred and ninety-four cases. In Leon County, we've had a hundred fifty-one, including four non-residents. At least fourteen of the cases investigated, and we're still investigating, so all the numbers are not in, have had no history of travel, uh of being a contact to a case. And this case community transmission, which is not a good sign. That's what we don't want to see. Also had sixty cases in the long-term care facility category. Commissioner Proctor, I know you asked about the breakdown uh by race and ethnicity. Our cases are forty-four percent white, twenty-nine percent black, three percent other, and twenty-three percent unknown at this time. Forty-two percent are males and fifty-six percent females. And the zip codes with the highest numbers are three two three oh four, three two three oh eight, three two three one two, and three two three one one. There is, uh I think Commissioner Minor asked about a report. There is a county report we can send to you. We get it. Uh it they just started creating it. It shows our demographic breakdown. It also has surveillance data that we look at to see ER visits by office, shortness of breath, and fever. So that kind of tells us generally uh whether we're seeing influenza-like illness or COVID-like illness in the community. So that's all good information. Emergency management has been convening sector calls on our behalf, and these calls occur weekly. We have um been meeting with education, law enforcement and first responders, hospitals and emergency management, or emergence, emergency medical services, long-term care facility, nonprofit partners, healthcare providers, and the homeless coalition. We we have conversations with those folks every week. And in addition, we meet with the Leon County Sheriff's Office weekly. We were doing that before because of hepatitis A, but um I can tell you they are they are really prepared um in terms of what they're doing. I don't want to speak for the sheriff, but they really have a great plan in place, and we're working very closely with them. The calls have been very helpful in providing uh us providing updates to our partners and them letting us know about any unmet needs that they have. So um our second priority is to protect the elderly. And on that end, our health department staff are calling the long-term care facilities every other day to monitor their situation and identify any ill residents that they may have, and then also letting us know about any unmet needs that they have. Our third priority is leveraging resources to test the community. And again, we've been working with the community collaboration that's staffing the Northwood Center Collection Site. As Mark described, this has been a tremendous asset in our community. It's one of the best things that we did. Um we are really grateful to our partners for making this happen early in the pandemic. It has removed the burden of testing for most of the providers, and it has saved precious PPE and reduced the risk of transmission. So that, I can't say enough about the Northwood Drive-Thru. Understanding Commissioner Proctor's comments, that is an issue we need to work on, and um and I think there are some ideas in the works about that. Our fourth priority is promoting the social distancing message. Our uh Public Information Officer Pam Salzbi convened a joint information center several weeks ago with uh many of the community partners, and they are coordinating their messaging. And I can't uh say enough about how I appreciate the various leaders in our community taking this on and really putting that message out there in many different ways. Our urging all employers to scream their employees for fever, cough, shortness of breath, and and urging their employees to stay home if they're sick. If if an employee is sick, if they've been tested for COVID, if the health department tells them they need to isolate or quarantine at home, we really need them to stay home. And uh if they're not getting paid, um they're more likely to come to work sick. So anything employers can do to help encourage employees who are ill or who um need to be quarantined to stay home, we would appreciate it. Couple of weeks ago, the CDC encouraged wearing cloth masks. I have a very um a caring sister-in-law in in Iowa who sent me mine. Um so you can have a very fashionable one. It is thought that this, combined with social distancing when people are out or around others, um combined with hygiene and distancing high-touch surfaces, will help reduce the spread of disease. Fifth priority is preparing for a medical surge, and recently we have turned our attention to this. We're supporting emergency management in this process, and uh we have convened a modeling team that includes both hospitals and the county. This team is analyzing data to make projections for planning purposes, and it recognizes that there is a cone of uncertainty, just like there is with the hurricane models, and we have to recognize that. But modeling is helpful to explore a range of possible scenarios. And uh what we recognize is that the most powerful variable, one that Mark has talked about continuously, and I'm and I'm thankful that he's done that, is to make our be aware of the effect of social distancing on those models. Social distancing is the key to flattening the curve and extending the the time that we have uh not very many cases so that we can get to the point where there's good medication, we're not overwhelming our healthcare system, and maybe a vaccine. So that social distancing is what we really, really have to focus on now and for many months to come. In addition, our chief planner, Gail Stewart, is working with the hospitals and emergency management on a plan for an alternate care site should the capacity of the hospitals be exceeded. So um you can see that we're using all of our public health tools to control the spread of COVID in Leon County. We're hoping that uh that will give us the best possible outcome, but uh at the same time, we are planning for the worst scenario. As always, the relationships that have been formed during a crisis um have have been really incredible, and we have solidified a lot of bonds and um but we do recognize that the inequities that led to poor health before the pandemic are still there, and they need our attention now more than ever. And I know Commissioner Proctor is focused on this, and uh so are we. So we appreciate the work of the county and in this community, in in this community that are too numerous to count. Um it's just been an incredible experience. So um that concludes my remarks. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Vince, for the support of the county. The county staff is is the best. So.
Thank you.
Everybody, thanks.
Thank you, Claudia. And uh and when I said Commissioners, that Claudia would just be scratching the surface, believe it or not. That was just the surface. She's been uh amazing for us throughout this event. And uh next up, we've got, and we realize you may have questions of for her, but we'll come to that uh if that's okay at the end. Next up, we've got Kevin Peters. Kevin?
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um as you've heard uh throughout the presentation this afternoon and have seen in the agenda materials, uh the EOC was activated on March tenth for the COVID nineteen. Uh when we say activated EOC, it is quite a bit different than uh what we've experienced during our our previous activations for hurricanes. Uh during a hurricane, we have uh a hundred and twenty or so folks in the EOC. Uh we're operating with about twelve folks in the same space, so we are definitely practicing our social distancing uh as we work to facilitate coordination amongst our community responders. Our engagement began before March tenth. Uh on on March second, uh we started our conference call processes. Uh Claudia just mentioned that. Um over the last six weeks, we've had nearly seventy conference calls we facilitated with our our local partners. Uh as Claudia mentioned, it's first responders, OEV, tourism, hospitals, EMS, local healthcare facilities and providers, our schools and colleges, a very exhaustive list of partners, but all very key to uh being part of the information sharing and coordination that has to go on. Additionally, we've been engaged uh with with state and regional conference calls. Uh we we are part of fifteen different calls every week uh for that process. Uh so a lot of this activity that's going on uh is utilizing the conference call technology um and and a lot of information sharing going on. Uh speaking of the state level, uh the governor issued the executive order on March first that directed the state surgeon general to declare the statewide public health emergency. On March ninth, the governor issued the executive order declaring a state of emergency, which activated the state's emergency operations center. Uh and after a series of executive orders that that did different things, such as closing the the dining spaces of restaurants, closing bars, uh limited visit or closed visitation to healthcare facilities, uh isolation for travelers from New York, New Jersey. After that series of executive orders, a statewide stay-at-home order, a safer-at-home order was issued by the governor on April third. The president issued a nationwide emergency declaration on March thirteenth. Uh in addition to the information coordination via conference calls, uh our emergency operations center is coordinating the uh ordering and distribution of personal protective equipment, uh also referred to as PPE. Uh we're doing that between our local healthcare uh sector and our and the state's EOC. I just wanted to say that the facilities management team for the county has very been very key and helpful uh in in getting the shipments that we receive from the state processed and prepared, so that we can make those distributions to our healthcare partners. As of yesterday, over a hundred and fifty-five thousand pieces of PPE have been distributed. Um these are items such as uh masks and gloves, gowns, face shields, uh and and hand sanitizer. Uh these distributions have gone to our community healthcare partners, such as our hospitals, uh health services providers like Bond and Neighborhood Health, assisted living living facilities and nursing homes. Uh we actually, one of our staff had the opportunity a week and a half ago to help Miracle Hill out. Um there was some supplies in for them, uh and and their staff was just not able to get out of the building. And uh we were able to send a staff member to to get the supplies from our staging area to take to them uh to make sure they can continue to provide care and get the supplies they needed. Um as the COVID cases have continued, um uh we begin identifying and coordinating the plans for our alternate care sites. Uh Claudia Blackburn talked a little bit about this um uh in partnership with the health department, uh EMS and our hospitals uh and and working with her, uh one of our staff members, Gail Stewart. Uh we've been able to develop a a a planning process, uh identify the needs, particularly at a case level for community and alternate care site. Uh that involves uh working with our hospitals to uh find out about the expansion space they've developed for hospital surge, uh developing ways to facilitate uh home self-care uh for those that 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 don't need to be in the hospitals that will have a wellness check component to it. Uh and additionally, as been mentioned, an off-site alternate care location, if needed, to help uh overflow some of the the surge in hospitals. Uh also, as Claudia mentioned, uh as part of this process, there is a modeling group group uh that's uh collaborative between the health department, TMH and and CRMC that's uh looking at the different data, the different models that each each entity has access to uh and providing us some guidance uh as we look at the evolution of COVID nineteen uh moving forward in time. Uh in addition to the local surge that we're planning for, and the county administrator mentioned it, we are engaged with our area's emergency managers and their health departments uh to uh facilitate additional planning for surge in our surrounding counties. Smaller rural hospitals and EMS agencies are engaged. Uh they're looking at ways also to uh expand their in-county and in-hospital capabilities and and maximize that that self-care at home and implement wellness checks in their counties also. Uh that's our our overview of our first six weeks of our COVID activation, and unfortunately, we we fear we may be another six weeks, but we're here and we're ready to continue on and do what we have to do to get the job done.
Thank you, Kevin. Hank Close, thanks for all you're doing. I'm sure there may be some follow-up questions for you. Next up, we have Shinkton Lammy.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Um Commissioners, we've been busy. Uh there are a couple of time of items on your agenda um on how we're providing flexibility for our human service partners and some of our healthcare partners um to respond to COVID nineteen. However, for this presentation, I want to talk about our homeless and our partners that serve them. For the last several weeks uh now, the local homeless COVID nineteen task force that I proudly serve on has been the foundation for the planning and coordination of the needs of our homeless service providers to ensure that they have the resources to implement it. There's the CDC guidelines that will prevent the spread and outbreak of COVID nineteen in their facility. In partnership with the city, Big Bang Continuum of Care, the health department, emergency management, twice a week for the last five weeks now, we've been holding conference calls to address the needs of Carney Center, Hope Community, Capital City Youth Services, and Refuge House. Through the task force, each shelter has developed and implemented plan to reduce their population to a level that meets the CDC guidelines for social distancing. They've divided up the space at their emergency shelter. They've moved clients to transitional housing and hotels and put policies in place to limit movement in and out of their buildings on an effort to prevent COVID nineteen. Through the task force and with the valiant effort of emergency management and our partners at the city, we're actively addressing their needs for PPEs and coordinating with COC to ensure that they get masks, hand sanitizers, touch thermometers when we can find them, and to ensure that they get masks, hand sanitizers, thermometers when we can find them, and other protective equipment. And so far, these efforts have been successful. According to the health department, there has been no positive COVID-19 cases in the homeless population in Leon County. And that's a great thing. But we're getting ready should that ever change. We've developed a plan to utilize non-congrat shelters like hotels. Should a homeless individual or family at one of the facilities become symptomatic for COVID-19 or test positive for COVID-19. Last week, that plan was approved by FEMA, which means getting hotels for the population will reimburse us at about 75%. This week, we're securing hotels to house the homeless that are symptomatic for COVID-19 or test positive for COVID-19 that will be executed in the next few days. We're partnering with COC to manage and coordinate the placement of homeless at the hotels should it be needed to organize meals, to establish procedures for movements, and to work with the health department to coordinate medical care for those that are housed at the hotels. There will be security and staffing whenever we have folks at the hotels. All of this is done in partnership with the city strategically and financially. Additionally, right now, today, we're in the middle of working with the Salvation Army to clear out their furniture store on Allen Road to convert it to a 7,500 square feet shelter that we're calling a community relief center to help with overflow at our established shelters. Within the next couple of weeks, we'll have COGS for about 50 homeless, men and women, portable showers, laundry service, and meals that will be catered by our local restaurants to assist those that are most in need over at Salvation Army. With the board authorization of up to $300,000 to utilize for the hotels and at the Salvation Site, we'll continue to assist our homeless providers to keep our most vulnerable safe and healthy. The city commission approved that same amount of up to $300,000 last week for the emergency shelter plan. And as I mentioned, funding provided to these efforts will be eligible for up to 75% in FEMA reimbursement. Again, I want to take a moment to salute all our partners serving on the task force, emergency management, I'm sorry, emergency management, the city, EOC, health department, Carney Center, Hope CCYS, and Refuge House. We are here today better prepared and ready, and that's because it's a testament to their leadership and commitment that each of them have demonstrated throughout the process. Plus, they've all had attendance to all of my calls, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Shinkin. Next up, we've got Deputy County Administrator Alan Rosenzweig.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm going to take a few minutes to talk to you about the fiscal impacts of COVID-19. I'm going to start by just giving you an overall big picture nationally, locally, and then we'll drill down a little into some specifics in Leon County. First, as you've all read and heard, we're definitely nearing or have already entered a recession. We can see that by the unprecedented unemployment, not only in the country, but in the state and here locally as we're starting to see data come in. We've seen significant declines in all of our consumer spending, and we've seen the reaction from the Federal Reserve by basically reducing the overnight rate to zero, about a quarter of a percent. Economists are all debating the impact long-term to this. You've probably seen news reports today that the International Monetary Fund thinks we're about to enter into the greatest global downturn since the depression, much greater than we even saw in the Great Recession. How long and how deep the recession goes is still being debated. There is consensus growing out there as we start reading more articles that that B you've heard about, that a sharp decline and a fast return is probably not the most likely outcome. There has been indications that this will be at least a long-term, a year or more recession potentially. Again, economists are all still debating that. We have some information in our item on that, but it is changing rapidly. Pre-recession commissioners, the United States, Florida, and the local economy were in good shape. So how we come out of it will be based on how we open the economy, the term you've been hearing a lot of. But one point we want to be very clear is even in reopening the economy, what economists are all starting to indicate is that consumers and businesses are going to be reluctant to start spending and reinvesting until such time as they feel safe in the healthcare era. So although the economy may open, we do believe that people's preferences and spending habits may change slowly until they feel safe. Coming into the current situation in Leon County, coming out of the Great Recession as we all experienced, we were very deliberate in our actions financially. We rebuilt our reserves, we reduced our long-term debt, and we were judicious in adding very few new positions to the county, all while always being very sensitive to taxpayer needs. With that being said, I feel, and I think we all feel, and the county administrator and the board showed, that we are well or better positioned than anybody in any county in the state to address these financial impacts. The impact will, of course, affect us in our current fiscal year that we're experiencing that goes through September 30th this year, as well as next fiscal year, which begins October 1st, and the budget we're starting to develop now. The big point about all this is we don't have actual data yet on any of the specific revenue impacts, and we won't for several months because everything lags a month or two as the department revenue collects it and distributes to us. But if we're looking at the revenues impacted, we just wanted to give you an overview of the ones that are going to be impacting here locally. First and foremost is our sales tax revenues. As we've seen, bars and restaurants close, which are taxable transactions. We've also been working with OEV, and one of our largest sales tax producers here locally in the state is car sales. And preliminary research done by Christina Predest in her office shows a significant decline in car transactions beginning in March and we anticipate going through April. We also know that gas taxes are going to be dropping precipitously. Our budget office has been doing surveying with OEV of our local gas stations. We've seen significant declines of up to 50% to 75% of gallons sold outside of diesel in some of our local gas stations, mainly due to no school, no work, and no travel. Our public services tax, which is the utilities, it's based on consumption utilities. We anticipate somewhat of a decline with businesses ceasing operation, but we also anticipate that being offset by more people being home and using utilities during the day. Again, it'll probably be a month or two till we see actual revenues coming in. Interest earnings, while it's nice to have a decline in interest rates when you're refinancing your mortgage, they will have a bearing on our conservative investment portfolio. Last year, we were earning between 2% and 2.5% on our portfolio. Right now, the federal funds rate, as I said, is at 1/4 of a percent, which will have a long-term impact on our portfolio. But over time, we anticipate that will recover as well. Tourism taxes, you have a separate standalone agenda item on that that we'll talk about later, but they will be the most significantly impacted as many of our hoteliers are experiencing below 10% occupancy rates right now. Long-term, we're doing active monitoring of our building and development fees. Those are all self-supported activities. We haven't seen a decline yet, but we are monitoring that closely. And we anticipate if a decline comes, it will start in the next several months. Our largest revenue source, as the board knows, is property taxes. And what I want to take a moment here is there will be no direct impact on property taxes as we double up this year's budget. Property values are set as of last December 31st, so December 31st, 2019, our values are set. And those are the values that we'll be using the upcoming budget workshops. Those increase in values we anticipate getting will, of course, be offset by all of the decline in revenues I just mentioned for next year. Long-term, the thing we're monitoring, of course, is next year. And depending on the length of a recession, those could impact future budgets if property values decline in the future. Again, only time will tell what happens for the balance of this year. OMB has already started modeling preliminary forecasts. We don't have any actual data, and we won't for several months from the Department of Revenue. We'll provide a complete update with good revenues and forecasts at your workshops. In the materials, we've identified a couple of minor changes to the budget calendar to provide us more time to provide the board the most accurate information available. But in anticipation of the workshops and to properly position the county to preserve as much cash and to reduce expenses to offset any of these decline in revenues, the county administrator notified the board on March 18th. He instituted a hiring freeze for all non-essential employees across the entire organization, which will help us offset those declines in revenue in the current year and maybe into next year, and he suspended all non-essential travel and training. So going into the budget workshops, commissioner, in conclusion, we will evaluate all of the revenues, will provide you projections, will bring you back any projected spending reductions that may need to occur to balance next year's budget. We'll update you on where we're at in the current year and other steps that may need to be taken to balance the current year budget. We may identify the utilization of our reserves, which have grown back after the Great Recession and after all the hurricanes, we've done well in recovery. We'll talk about if we need to delay any capital projects and anything else that needs to be done. But all of that will come back to you with the best data available as part of your workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. And commissioners, as with all of these items, happy to take any questions that you have at the end of this. Next up, we've got Andy Johnson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Happy to be here to provide everybody a quick update on the response to COVID-19 in Congress. As you all know, things have been moving basically at light speed in Washington. Over the last few weeks, Congress has passed three major pieces of legislation, including the largest economic relief bill ever. But as fast as things have been moving, we've been hyper-focused, of course, with the help of our federal lobbying team on staying all the way up to date with all the latest information as soon as it comes out. So that, of course, helps us to not only focus our advocacy efforts, but also helps us to quickly get information out to the community. So a big shout out to our team at Patton Boggs for being our boots on the ground and doing a great job for us. So I know Sarah Vilms gave you all a very comprehensive update during the last IA meeting. So what I intend to do is provide you just a quick recap and hit the highlights of what Congress has done so far. And then the rest of my update is going to focus on the very latest updates and developments in Washington and what we expect to come next. So with that quick summary of what's happened so far, as I mentioned, Congress has passed three bills basically focused on the federal government's response to the coronavirus. And I want to emphasize that word "response." I'll come back to that at the end. We're referring to the three bills that they've passed so far as the Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3 bills. So the first one, which Congress passed way back on March 6th, which feels like a lifetime ago now, focused on the immediate public health response. So that bill provided about $8 billion to do things like step-up testing for COVID-19, buy supplies for the Strategic National Stockpile, and do treatment and vaccine research. So two weeks later, on March 18th, the second bill came out, which was called the Families' First Coronavirus Response Act. And that bill did several things, which included providing an expansion of emergency food and nutrition assistance, expanding that testing coverage for COVID-19 to people who don't have health insurance. But I would tell you that the biggest highlight of the Phase 2 bill is that it required many employers, businesses, and organizations that have 500 or fewer employees to provide sick leave and paid family leave for employees who are affected in different ways by COVID-19. So that included up to 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave, as well as another 10 weeks of paid leave under FIMLA for employees to care for a child whose school has been closed or their childcare provider is unavailable. As I mentioned, those provisions apply to organizations that are under 500 employees, as well as almost every government employer, including all local governments. But the bill does allow small businesses with under 50 employees, so some of the smallest, small businesses, to be able to apply for an exemption from the paid leave requirements related to school closures in order to allow those businesses to continue to operate. And then also, the bill provided a tax credit for these businesses, which also includes nonprofits, to be able to offset the cost of providing that sick and family leave for their employees. So that brings us to the Phase 3 bill, which is the big one. This is the CARES Act, which, as you know, Congress passed on March 27th. So this is the bill that provided $2.2 trillion for emergency response and economic relief, which, as I mentioned earlier, makes it basically the largest response bill or relief bill ever passed by Congress. So while I wish I could summarize everything that's included in a $2.2 trillion bill for you, I'm just going to hit a few of the major highlights as it relates to the county and our community. And of course, your agenda item includes a complete analysis of every line of the bill provided by Patton Boggs. So first, about a million or a trillion, I'm sorry, a trillion dollars of the CARES Act goes toward economic assistance. And that includes the $350 billion for the paycheck protection program to provide forgivable loans backed by the SBA to help small businesses maintain their payroll, as well as $10 billion more to expand the existing SBA disaster loan program, and another half a trillion through the Treasury to make loans and loan guarantees for mid-sized businesses, large businesses, and state and local governments as well. The CARES Act also provided a new federal unemployment benefit of $600 per week for up to four months. And that's in addition to the unemployment benefit that states already provide, and it extends the state benefits for another 13 weeks on top of what each state provides on an individual basis now. And it also expands unemployment coverage to people who are independent contractors or self-employed, who typically don't qualify for unemployment. The bill also provided, as you know, for direct stimulus payments of up to $1,200 per adult. And as you've probably seen in the news, the first wave of those payments is going out as we speak this week. And finally, the bill created a $150 billion coronavirus relief fund for state and local governments. And I want to pause on that and provide a couple more details about that fund that I wanted to highlight for you. So first, how is that fund going to be divvied up? About half of that funding is going to go to the states, and the other half is dedicated for direct support to local governments. But the bill defines eligible local governments as those that have a population of over 500,000. So what does that mean for smaller local governments? And the answer is, right now, we don't know yet because the Treasury just issued their first round of guidance yesterday afternoon on how that $150 billion fund is going to be distributed. But it's silent on what states are going to have to do with the funds that they receive. So it's not clear yet whether smaller local governments will be able to apply for a portion of the state's share, for example. But we do anticipate that at some point in the next couple of months, Florida's legislature at state level is probably going to have to come back into a special session to accept all the various funds that the federal government's going to be providing and allocate all of those different funds out, and that includes the coronavirus relief fund. I will tell you that NACO, along with the National League of Cities, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, are all asking Congress to make funding directly available to all local governments in the next round of legislation, which I'll talk about in just a moment. And there are also several members of Congress who are asking the Treasury to make sure that smaller local governments are able to get a share of the fund, whether that involves a fix of the next bill or guidance from the Treasury that allows for smaller local governments to access it. So that brings us to where we're at right now, commissioners. When you got the last update from Sarah Vilms at the IA meeting, Congress was talking in terms of a Phase 4 bill that would start to focus on recovery. Again, I mentioned the first three bills are really focused on immediate response. Phase 4, again, a couple of weeks ago, just as recently as that, they started to talk about recovery with potentially a very large investment in infrastructure. But I will tell you, since that last update that you received at IA, they've kind of tapped the brakes on that a little bit because we're still very much in the response phase. So the latest and greatest is this. Last week, the Senate rolled out a bill to basically replenish $250 billion more back into the paycheck protection small business loan program, which could run out of funds as early as the end of this week. It's being pretty substantially subsidized at this point. Nancy Pelosi and Senate Minority Leader Chuck Schumer, who are basically negotiating a position on the Democrat's side in the House and Senate, they do want that $250 billion in additional small business loans, but they also want improvements to the loan program to make sure that about half of those funds are accessible to small businesses that are owned by women, minorities, and veterans. They also want another tranche of $150 billion in relief specifically for state and local governments, another $100 billion for hospitals and community health centers, and a 15% increase to the maximum SNAP benefit. So as of right now, House and Senate are kind of at a standstill. But the latest news as of this morning is that it looks like the Senate may go ahead and take the deal. Majority Leader Mitch McConnell has said that he may put the bill on the Senate on Thursday, but between now and then, it could still be a bumpy road to get there because both chambers are in recess, which means that anything they do is going to have to be done by unanimous consent. But of course, we'll continue to keep you updated, and we'll work, obviously, with OEV to make sure we get the latest information as well, so we can get that information out to the community. So as for what comes next beyond that, the crystal ball is not quite as clear, so to speak, but it does look like the House and the Senate are both in agreement that more relief is going to be needed. The questions from there are just going to be what, how much, and when. Over the last two weeks, Speaker Pelosi has been talking about, again, another relief bill that could basically be a second round of the CARES Act with potentially more assistance to businesses, potentially another round of stimulus payments, and possibly an expansion of social service programs as well. In terms of timeline, Congress could be looking at a Phase 4 bill as early as the end of this month or maybe the beginning of May. They're in recess, at least the House is in recess right until May 4th. And I would tell you that infrastructure, I think, at this point is still very difficult to play. We don't know yet whether it's going to be part of a Phase 4 bill or maybe something that could come later after that. So with that, commissioners, just to wrap up my portion of the update, of course, as you know, as you would expect, we are in constant communication with Patton Boggs several times every single day. We're also staying in close contact with our delegations to reinforce the county priorities that NACO is articulating to Congress, in fact, as well. Your agenda item includes a letter, actually, that NACO sent to Congress just last week highlighting several issues that are important to county governments in the next round of legislation. So again, commissioners, this is all moving extremely quickly by Congress standards, but we'll continue to keep you updated with all the latest information. With that, thank you, and I'll stick to Vince's mention until the end to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Andy. Next up, we've got Matt Cavell.
Thank you very much, Vince. So commissioners, in coordination with the county administrator,
So Commissioners, in coordination with County Administrator, before I began the presentation today, I said, how much of the five minutes can I dedicate to only the Gator on physical distance? And he said, maybe only four minutes and 59 seconds. But what seriously I want to say about public information efforts to date in relation to this public health emergency is that the Gator, believe it or not, is only one example of unique graphics out of 250 in which we've generated. And speaking of unique graphics, I actually created a very complicated graphic just to show for the Gator, just real briefly here, the amount of national coverage that the Gator had gotten. Again, the purpose of all of that is that the nation efforts we do now are the ones that absolutely save lives for the purposes of physical and social distancing. And in that overall aggregate of the communications efforts we've done, our message about protecting public health through physical and social distancing, but also the importance of public health through educating folks as the nature of all of these CDC guidelines and all of our local public health messaging changes over time, that's been seen 6 million times. So 6 million times read, seen, or heard, a very familiar metric by which we have measured our success in the past for disasters, but it has been seen in digital, on CTV and Tallahassee Democrat and then Weather Channel application, and in print media, both in the Capital Outlook and the Tallahassee Democrat. It's been on radio station, all these messages about how to protect public health and safety. It's been on television, it's been on every streaming device that you could possibly think about adding it to. And in addition, our public information team has even geo-fenced grocery stores in our community to communicate essential activities and services messages to those in our community engaged in those essential activities and services. So overall, in the course of time, we've posted more than 300 different social media outlets, updates on our six different social media outlets. Those have been large, successful promotions, such as the Rally Fratelli to Support Our Local Businesses, which was just a few weeks ago, though it feels like a lifetime ago. And in addition, the launch of our Timely News from Trusted Voices video series, which has also been successful and featured folks and community leaders and officials from across our community. And we've also issued 25 different advisories that have included our community updates. And those community updates, again, as public information and health continues to need to be reinforced in our community, as those standards continue to change and shift from our health experts, that's been a key integral part in addition to a website we stood up specifically dedicated to COVID-19 information that's linked to on our emergency information portal. So all of those different elements, again, 6 million different times read, seen, and heard, and unfortunately, we may just be getting started. And we know that our public information efforts are now more important than ever, and our team remains continued to focusing on what is important for our community in relation to this public health emergency. So thank you, and I'll turn it back over to County Administrator.
Thank you, Matt. And Commissioners, as you recall, we aligned community and media relations under Matt with emergency management back after one of our after-action reports with the hurricanes, and it has proven to pay dividends for us, and we're seeing many other local governments doing that more and more, by the way. With that, I'd like to now turn to Chief Chad Abrams. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioners, I've always known how fortunate we are to have an exceptional team of EMTs and paramedics that provide the highest level of service to our community. And during this pandemic, your EMS team continues to serve our community with a remarkable level of professionalism, compassion, and resilience. The EMS team and the county team that supports us have put forth an extraordinary effort and have really done an outstanding job. I believe that because of our team, our community partnerships, and the county's leadership, that we are well positioned to meet the needs of our citizens. Commissioners, I'm going to just hit the very highlights of everything that's been going on with EMS and our preparedness and response efforts to date, and talk a little bit about our ongoing preparedness. By no means is this even close to scratching the surface of everything that's been going on. It's been almost a month ago that EMS transported our first COVID-positive patient. We've since responded to hundreds of patients because of COVID symptoms, cared for around 20 known COVID-positive patients throughout the community. EMS has supported the Northwood sample collection site every day that the location's been open. We've already provided 380 man-hours of support to that effort so far. Our infectious disease response team has provided 91 man-hours in response to two separate state-assigned missions as a part of the Department of Health and Agency for Healthcare Administration response to mitigate coronavirus impacts at facilities with vulnerable populations. Even though our community was not impacted by this virus until March, EMS began monitoring the coronavirus in January, and by the end of January, it really began preparations and ordered additional personal protective equipment. I think that has been key for our preparedness and has really served us well. Internally, we have disseminated to our members five divisional situational reports, five informational bulletins, and 15 response guidelines and medical protocols, all related to the COVID-19 response, with the first communication going out to our team at the end of January. While our preparedness for the specific coronavirus has been unique, preparing to respond to infectious diseases is certainly customary for EMS, we have used the lessons learned from previous infectious diseases such as H1N1, Ebola, SARS, MERS, and as Claudia mentioned, we're currently also assisting with the hepatitis A outbreak. Those enhance our preparedness for any biological threat, and they certainly present ourselves with the opportunity to adapt those structures into our coronavirus preparedness and response strategies. Our participation over the last six years as a member of the state's infectious disease transport network is certainly one example of this. Our planning and response posture for this pandemic has been predicated on two main objectives, the health and safety of our members and citizens, so stopping the transmission and spread of disease, and providing the highest level of care available to the community for those that are impacted by the virus. Since February, we've been actively engaged to our community partners, our healthcare partners, and emergency response partners in planning, preparedness, and response to COVID. Our planning and response guidance is based on CDC guidelines and Department of Health guidance, and certainly best practices. We participate in numerous regular scheduled recording and teleconferences with local, state, and federal healthcare organizations, emergency managers, infectious disease experts, and community partners that helps inform us about our planning. We've also sought out best practices and lessons learned from other jurisdictions and experience and earlier impact on us, and have incorporated that information into our planning assumptions. As the response to COVID-19 continues, so do the preparedness, so do responses to heart attacks, strokes, and other medical and trauma emergencies. Again, Commissioners, while we're hopeful that the impact of COVID on our community is minimal, we certainly are preparing for the worst. We've developed staffing contingency plans to ensure continued operation of the division throughout the pandemic. These plans consider alternative shift patterns and staffing arrangements as well as alternative response options. At the present time, EMS does have an adequate supply of personal protective equipment. Our logistics team, as well as the purchasing division, continue to procure resources through multiple supply chains, and we also work with emergency management to make requests up to the state for supply. In system with CDC guidance, we have developed contingency plans and a supply of alternative respirators should shipments of N95 respirators not be received before their supplies are expended. Again, we don't anticipate that being an issue, but we do want to go ahead and start contingency planning for those different potentials. For the last several weeks, approaching a month as a means to protect our members and the community, EMS has been monitoring the health of all paramedics and EMTs. You've heard both Claudia and Mark O'Brien mention that it's a good practice to be doing that, and we have been doing that for just about a month. EMS members that are sick with flu-like symptoms are screened and tested for infection of the virus through the Department of Health and Claudia's shop. To date, six EMS members have been tested for COVID, and all results have been negative at this point. The Surgeon General has prioritized the testing of symptomatic first responders and healthcare workers, which is conducted at state laboratories, so we are getting those results back in 24 hours. This is certainly important to us because it not only allows us to ensure the health of our members and our patients, but it allows the EMTs and paramedics that are sick of respiratory illness that's not COVID to return to work. EMS continues working with our healthcare partners to plan for the possible surge of patients that overwhelm available resources. We see EMS is having two roles in this, and I'm sure you've heard other people talk about. The first is really the entry into the healthcare system. If we can provide patients with alternatives, such as care being provided at alternate destinations, providing telehealth services for those patients not experiencing high-priority symptoms, those will help impact the surge on the healthcare system. For this to be successful, we have to rely on our community partners and have alternative treatment and, in some cases, alternative transportation options readily available in the community. The second way that EMS can assist with healthcare surge is to leverage EMS resources to assist the hospitals with decompressing inpatient numbers by sending patients on the path to recovery home for healthcare professionals, including paramedics, to provide home visits and assist telehealth follow-ups. Implementation of this program is certainly scalable and can be operational if needed. Most of the resources needed for this program have been identified and are in place, and we'll continue to work with our healthcare and emergency management partners in the development of alternate care and healthcare surge solution. In closing, Commissioners, EMS continues to make contingency plans for staffing, medical supplies, and personal protective equipment. We'll continue to engage community partners or healthcare partners and first responder agencies in response to the pandemic. EMS's response to this pandemic has been based on the best practices and the latest standard of medical care. The health and safety of our members and citizens providing the best care will continue to be our guiding principle, and certainly will help them do the best for the community. And Commissioners, I recognize the importance of your leadership and leadership of County Administration in leveraging those resources and relationships of the county towards helping us to ensure that we're meeting the needs of the community. Certainly, thank you for that leadership. Again, I appreciate your support, and I'll turn it back over to the County Administrator.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for your leadership throughout this event and for the critical work of our EMS team. With that, I'd like to transition to Christina Perittis with OEB.
Thank you, County Commissioner. Commissioners, I'm pleased to provide you with an update today on our response to the COVID-19. Within 12 days of your activation of the Cedar Grant, we awarded 489 businesses who employ over 4,400 people with the grant. The majority of these businesses had 1 to 10 employees. We're continuing to process payments and will provide a complete status report at your Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency Board of Directors tomorrow. This quick action by you has been noticed all across the state. We've received several calls from local communities and economic development organizations asking how we did this and where we got the money. So your initial efforts to provide a lifeline to these small businesses in the critical first few weeks and provide that bridge to the bridge were truly noted. I'm going to highlight a couple of the activations of the grant we've talked about at the state and federal level. Recently, the state of Florida announced the closure of the Emergency Bridge Loan Program that is administered by DEO and the state. There was $49 million available, and 6.1 million was loaned out to 114 of our local businesses in our area. You have a standing loan committee that quickly was able to activate and be able to process applications in a quick fashion in order to take advantage of a good chunk of that money going right here to our local businesses. We're also in constant contact with our regional small business, U.S. Small Business Administration. We are anticipating that there will be hundreds of millions of dollars in SBA Economic Disaster and Payroll Protection Loan Programs request to be processed from Tallahassee Leon County businesses. This doesn't say they will all get funded, but that we do anticipate a large number of requests coming in from our local area businesses. Also, we're continuing to work with Florida Makes, and they have recently announced a partnership with Association of Industries of Florida and State Florida to launch the Connects Florida. This is a supply chain database tool for our manufacturing industry here in Florida. The purpose of this tool is to help Florida manufacturers better connect with each other and discover new resources and increase business opportunities across manufacturing. We're promoting this tool to our local manufacturers through direct outreach, and we'll continue to work with Florida Makes on this. In addition, we're working with several companies here locally to share their innovative adaptations to COVID-19, from Corey Bio with shifting their manufacturing to hand sanitizer to those making masks and shields, and connecting our local restaurants with Coca to celebrate National Poetry Month with poems to go with your takeout orders, and of course, the sausage stimulus that was just... We're sharing these stories via our newsletter and social media and across... We also have many radio advertisements as well, and we're still receiving requests to add folks to our Open to Takeout map, which has received over 35,000 hits. So thank you to GIS for their continued coordination to make that a possible map. Our team is making calls for assistance to ensure that local businesses are aware of the resources to them, and we update this information on our Business Resource Guide. We're also working with the Chamber to promote their Jobs Now initiative, as well as Career Source Capital Region to highlight those businesses who are hiring and looking for talent. And Commissioners, I look forward to our Blueprint meeting tomorrow, where we'll also provide you with an important-depth update on all these activities, as well as a detailed analysis of our Cedar Grant program. Thank you again for your leadership during this time.
Thank you, Christina. And I'll just, a quick note for the presenters to please speak up. We just got the message that some of them, some of the presenters here may be a little difficult to hear, so just keep that in mind. But we're bringing it in for landing, Commissioners. We have just two more, and we'll be going to Wanda Hunter.
Thank you, Vince. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. As the County Administrator mentioned to you earlier, I was asked the staff, a team of constitutional officers, as well as employees, to look at our internal protocols and procedures and policies and to coordinate any changes to address the evolving threat of COVID-19. I'm pleased to report that the County Administrator sent out that request on February 27, and we held our first meeting with all of the constitutional officers, having a representative present, on February 28. So the team has continued to hold weekly meetings and share updates and best practices, guidance, and even information on resources. We also have implemented an internal website to provide updates to constitutional officers to get current information in between our regular weekly conference calls. So like my team, I'd like to take a few minutes briefly to highlight some of the activities and protocol that we've put in place to ensure the safety of our employees and the continuity of services for our citizens. First, we enhanced our facilities maintenance services to increase our extra cleaning in high-traffic areas of all county facilities. We also compiled our service delivery option for every community department to assess which services we currently provide online, which services we might temporarily provide online or by telephone. We also provided the staff with guidance on how to implement telecommuting for certain staff. We have tasked each of our departments to assess their methods and their logistics for ensuring social distancing to maintain safety among our staff when telecommuting was not a viable option. We inventory our laptop computers and our other technology resources to ensure we maintain connectivity. We are very grateful to Michelle Taylor and the MIS team. In fact, they were also instrumental in helping other constitutional officers with these services, so we're all very grateful. We ensured our supply of personal sanitation products and PPEs, such as hand sanitizing wipes, hand sanitizing gels, gloves, those things were on hand to address the increased demand we knew we would get for these types of products. Our Human Resources Office provided refresher training for managers and supervisors on how to proxy into our automated timesheet system to ensure that those employees who were out of the office, absences or otherwise, and can continue to receive their pay. We work very closely with the County Attorney's Office to implement and monitor the impact of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, as well as the Governor's Executive Order 2091, the Safe at Home. So Commissioners, these are just a few of the things we've put in place, and we continue to work very closely with our constitutional officers and our regular communications during this declared state of emergency and are prepared to respond if there is a need to increase our efforts in any way.
Wanda, thank... I was just going to say, Wanda, thank you so much. And last but not least, we're going to hand it off to Chastity Osteen. he is one. I was just going to say, Wanda, thank you so much. Uh, and last but not least, uh, we're going to hand it off to Chastity Osteen.
Uh, thank you, County Administrator. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, um, first of all, to say it's been a pleasure working with uh county administration's staff under his leadership. It's been fantastic. We worked on a couple of different things. One, the development of the proclamations on an evolving and ruling basis. Um, Patty Papal in the county attorney's office has been instrumental in those. Um, we have been researching the sunshine law aspects of converting to virtual meetings on a temporary basis during the tendency of the proclamations uh in the pandemic. Um, heads up to the board, you will be seeing some further amendments to the board policy to address how to proceed with quasi judicial proceedings in compliance with sunshine law and procedural requirements. Um, so that will be coming as well. Kyle Kemper in our office has been working diligently on that. Um, we did help, as Wanda mentioned, review and implement provisions of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act um in conjunction with Wanda N H R uh and Wilshon Riggins from the county attorney's office was very helpful with that. Um, we've been working with Shinkton's group on the development of the non-congregate housing contract and Emily Pepin has been pointing on that. Uh, and uh Dan Rigo uh has also been working on the potential settlement of several pieces of pending litigation, which you will hear more about later in this meeting. Um, going forward, of course, we'll keep an eye on Executive Order twenty dash sixty-nine, which is currently scheduled to expire on May eighth. And that's what gives us the ability to hold these virtual meetings and suspend certain of these um statutory sunshine law requirements. So uh we'll keep an eye on that, like I mentioned. Uh, and um that is all that I have uh for the board this time. I would like to go ahead and respond to Commissioner Proctor's inquiry earlier about um food establishments. Um, so uh the Florida Department of Health regulates food safety sanitation. Um, they have come out with a certain guidance for workers um in this situation where there is a transmission or potential transmission of COVID-19 associated with food. Um, at this time, uh, it is not in um the Department of Health's guidelines or recommendations issued by its Bureau of Environmental Health, uh, the Food and Safety Sanitation Program for those workers uh to be uh to to wear masks. Um, just putting that out there, although under the clean and sanitize um provision says um use personal protective equipment such as face masks, gloves, aprons, shoe coverings or goggles if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Chastity. And and commissioners, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, believe it or not, that was the whip around version of this. As I told you, this has been a an organization-wide um effort. It continues to be. And all the employees that you heard from today uh are still available here and happy to answer any questions that you might have. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
All right, I think I've got Commissioner Proctor with his hand up and I'll start taking questions. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. This is um this is um quite comprehensive and I want to thank our staff. And um I was just thinking, uh, Vince, uh, actually wrote a note somewhere that uh one of the things that our our staff does is that in moments of crises, it's like you guys just sit and wait for it because you shine. And uh you always come through uh impeccably well. You've given us a comprehensive guide from the router to the tutor of what is occurring with respect from the federal, the state, what we're doing locally. And um I'm very, very uh pleased by the comprehensive overview uh that has been offered. Um, I believe that Ms. Blackburn uh stepped up um with clear uh objectives to stop the COVID from spreading, protect the elderly, uh leverage our resources, promote social distancing and all of that. Um, Shinkton, I do have a question for you, uh, good report. And that is with respect to the $300,000 ask for um the homeless. Uh, what are the um variables to uh apply on who going to get that money? Are we using a formula for the numbers of heads in beds? Are we just following the formula willy-nilly? Uh, I need and want to know how are we going to spread that money and what is parity with respect to covering uh this homeless money? I was very pleased uh that no one from the homeless community uh is a known positive. And I'm not certain if that's the result of they didn't drive up to get tested. I don't know. Uh, if we could get some of them in a car and drive them to a test site, maybe we'll find out something different. But as long as they not in a car and then going to see about a test, at least we can say nobody in the homeless is uh is uh affected. But it sounded good, though I know that many have no cars. Uh, Alan Rosenwag, we compliment you today. Uh, our condolences to you and your family. Uh, here you are in the trenches only hours after losing your father. I don't even know how you're standing, but uh our love, uh Leon County is strong because of leadership and voices and service like yours. Thank you, Alan, for even being here. Um, you've given us confidence to believe that our county, unlike 66 other counties in Florida, we are prepared to go forward. And commissioners, as your senior commissioner, I can simply say that from experience that Vince and Alan, time and again, have led us forward through moments even darker than these. So that Alan would leave his family to be here today um to share and show his care for what is conveyed. Um, none but the highest regard and respect. Counsel, you um have shared with us, I think that we ought to look at a I'm not sure how if three other commissioners feel this way, but I think that we need a emergency ordinance to mandate uh that workers cover their mouths uh and require gloves. And I know you said that it's not spelled out. I listened carefully, but it's our option, I believe, if we want to require that to stem any potential of the spread of COVID. Uh, commissioners, I'm interested in that as I heard from our counsel's report today. Um, Wanda Hunter, I heard your report and my question to you, do we have enough masks? And I heard that Mark O'Brien earlier said that T M H is sharing resources, sharing masks, sharing gloves with neighboring counties and surrounding health facilities. Do we have enough masks to share with neighboring counties and neighboring facilities in the spirit and in the manner with which O'Brien said that they are doing? Um, Nick, as my president of fact, what I heard today, and I think I heard Andy Johnson and I read here today, is that um of Florida's counties, of the 67 counties, about 55 or 56 of them ain't going to get no money from phase three. That mean that the federal legislation have been written in a way that disqualifies the majority of Florida's counties to get no relief. Now, that the Florida Association of Counties with you as my president, y'all have got to go back in and fight that. And the legislature of Florida cannot be trusted with money to distribute to all Florida and treat us right and treat us fair. They don't do that. So this part of money, the $2 trillion, we ain't getting none. And that is not right. And for the majority of Florida's counties not to get no money, Nick, we need you to fight the good fight. Then finally, in what I've heard, Vince, and I thank you for all of staff sharing tonight and you and our reaction. Our communications message uh that we're dealing with, you know, we can come up with, you know, cute things and nice things and 600 different whatever I heard, but what we need to make sure in a serious moment like this is that our message is communicated is got to be a hard, a firm, a sure message that's certain. And we don't need a lot of fluctuation and how many different emojis we can float. We need to be concise. That message got to be tight and right. And we got to make sure that the public is not feeling teased around and played with. I want us to make sure that we keep a strong, solid message that conveys the temperament of seriousness in the tenor of our times. And I'm not saying we've not done it. I am simply saying, let's do that and stay on task. Um, those are my reactions to what I've heard. Uh, thanking again for the wonderful, comprehensive, um, all of this data. I just wish you all were working at the White House, to be honest about it, because you've given us a lot more commensurate to our task than what I believe nationally uh has been shared with uh those leaders. Those are my um first round responses, Mr. Chair. I yield the floor, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman, would you like to take a shot at some of that?
And thank you, Commissioner Proctor, for all that. And um I was keeping track of a couple of questions that you asked and I just wanted to make sure we went to the appropriate staff on those. Uh, first, let me go to Shinkton Lammy on the homelessness situation. Uh, not a distribution of dollars in that case, uh, but a plan uh which is funded with various roles and responsibilities, as Shinkton said, which has been approved uh by uh the State Emergency Management and FEMA. But with that, Shinkton, uh, let me uh, let me go to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. County Administrator, and that is correct. Those dollars wouldn't go to any specific agency or organization. What it will be utilized for in working with the Big Ben C O C as well as the city is um for security, for food, for hotels, for staffing, for cots, blankets, and all those things that um that I've mentioned are reimbursable um through FEMA. Uh, one of the things that we we identified as part of the task force at the very beginning is that a gap that existed for our homeless providers is where to house those homeless that become symptomatic or positive for COVID-19. They did not have the capacity or the resources to handle that. And so working with the partners on on the task force, we identified that that was a need and we were able to develop a plan, which was approved by FEMA, to utilize hotels. And these dollars will be used for that as well as providing some of those wraparound services that those individuals will need and for and in our, also in order for us to be able to um utilize the hotels.
Who is the agency handling that? Who is the agency that's going to facilitate that part of money? Who is the the go-to?
We're working um closely with the Big Ben Continuum of Care, uh, Big Ben C O C. Uh, that's the um, that's the body that that all um homeless providers participate in. They also help in this distribution of federal and state homeless dollars. And so they're the partner that we've been working very closely with as well as with the city. Um, because the idea is that they would manage, um, they would serve as far as managing the um the the individuals that would be going into uh the hotels. Um, they'll be assisting us with um coordinating food, coordinating security, coordinating assignment of rooms. Um, they'll be assisting us also in um helping put um stand up the Salvation Army location and and staffing that and coordinating with all of our partners, Carney Center and Hope Community in order um to ensure that we can coordinate and communicate uh and collaborate in how we um make sure that no one who need who wants to be somewhere safe um has a place to go.
Very good. I got it, Shinkton. I'm good. I'm good on that. Okay.
Okay.
And with with that, and thank you, Shinkton. With that, let me go to Kevin Peters. Uh, Kevin, Commissioner Proctor asked a question related to uh the regional efforts and specifically uh the potential uh on the distribution of P P E to some of our uh counties that may be in need. And I know you've been coordinating conference calls a couple of times a week with uh as the coordinating entity for 13 of our surrounding counties. So could you speak to that just a little, Kevin?
Yes, sir. Uh, in in addition to those regional calls, it happened uh three days a week. We're on daily calls with the State Emergency Operations Center uh at the state level, State Division of Emergency Management and working at the federal government, and they've been able to obtain some of the supplies from the Strategic National Stockpile. They also have engaged in the the bulk buying uh through different vendors to get P P E delivered into the state. And um they're they're working collaboratively with us on our daily calls to find out what the needs are. Uh, additionally, regionally, we're talking three times a week to understand what the needs are. And those shipments are coming from the state to each of the counties. Um, again, as we talked uh recently at sub-state level, um, we have the ability to coordinate and collaborate any needs and we can shuffle uh shuffle supplies if another county is in need. So we do have that forum uh to talk about that and address those needs amongst the different county emergency managers in our
Okay, um, next up, uh, does that answer your question? Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Maddox, did you want to weigh in on that?
Uh, if I could, Commissioner Proctor asked specifically about fact stance on um Congress's lack of 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 direction of the of those funds towards towards the county level. Uh, Commissioner Proctor, this approved and my signature was placed on a letter that went to Speaker Pelosi and Leader Schumer that read, uh, there was a lot more verbiage to it, but for the most part, the boded part read, "We strongly urge Congress to allocate resources directly to counties." As most state mandate mandate the implementation of public health emergency response response between two county government. And so we take a strong stance that those funds do need to be given to counties, uh, the majority of the worst. We'd be, we'd be pretty aggressive along with NATO and trying to make sure that those funds come to us and we can do the work that we uh desperately need to do in the midst of this pandemic. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Jackson, did you want to speak to Kevin specifically? Or I've gotten queued up. Commissioner Dozier then is up next. But Commissioner Jackson, you want to speak to Kevin?
Well, actually, my question was for Claudia and it was very brief. I don't know if she's still online with us or not.
Everybody is. Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Claudia, I just wondered, uh, the T D C cases, are they factored into the three, two, three, oh, four numbers that we're looking at?
Um, I cannot identify any particular long-term care facility, so I can't really answer that specifically. I'm sorry.
Okay, so that facility is located in zip code three, two, three, oh, four. Many times, though, the um the folks that are in that that program are, their families are not uh full-time residents of three, two, three, oh, four. It'd be interesting for us to to know that as long as we uh or to have that information as long as it didn't violate any sort of um privacy acts. But uh, okay, thanks a lot.
Great. I've got Commissioner Dozier up next.
Uh, all right, I'm unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was making sure. Um, great update, everyone. I uh I have a few questions, but I'll run through for those I don't have questions for. Kevin, phenomenal job. Thank you for all that you're doing, your coordination. Uh, Chief Evans, same. Um, I've I've heard some people mention, they're they're really picking up on the status of our EMS, Leon County EMS around the states being one of the 10, I'm not going to say it exactly right, but that is trained to deal with high-risk patients. I'm just really proud of all the work you all have done for years. Um, and really for everyone, this is just a fantastic update. Um, Claudia, I'm going to start real quick. Um, I had two questions for you. First, about surfaces, I'm getting questions about our parks, city or county, um, whether it's handrails or benches or bathrooms, things like that. Um, I, County Administrator and I have talked about this a little bit, but just thinking about how to address those questions or where we can direct people for information. Um, just wondering if you had any thoughts about that?
So um you're wanting to know about uh disinfecting playgrounds and and bathrooms and things like public bathrooms?
Not necessarily playgrounds since we've closed them, but yes, people are still going out using the parks. If they grab a handrail, I had I had an elderly couple email me and ask if they could use Cascades Park. I didn't want to answer the question. I'm not the expert, but we were going back and forth on trying to avoid touching those surfaces. So is there something that city and county, are we are we approaching the parks correctly in your opinion? I assume we are. And any direction for others who are using the public spaces that are still open?
Well, there are disinfecting guidelines out there. And I think that the county is, um, adhering to those guid- guidelines for whatever areas are open to the public right now. Uh, so maybe it would be Vince that could, um, answer that question.
And, uh, and the, the short answer is, uh, that's, uh, correct, Commissioner. Our, um, facilities management staff under Maggie, they've been very diligent about, uh, that. Not only our work, but to ensure that our contracts, uh, contractees that are coming in and performing, uh, some of those works are also adhering, uh, to those standards as well.
Do our folks have P P E when they're cleaning those facilities and things like that?
I believe, yes, our facility staff does, yes.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Claudia, the, the other question I had, this may be something we need to talk about in the future. Um, but I'm starting to hear some communities, particularly the nonprofit Partners in Health in the Boston area, they work on infectious, infectious disease around the world. And they're starting to set up a local contact tracing, um, system. And I'm wondering if that's something that you're, you and your partners at Florida Department of Health are starting to talk about? How we beef up our contact tracing system as more testing becomes available? Or is that, is that just something we're not even addressing yet?
Um, well, I have heard through the grapevine that, um, it is being worked on, uh, at the state, uh, office. But they're looking at the use of technology to help us with that. Because you're right, as rapid testing increases, perhaps at some point, there'll be home testing. Uh, we will need all the help we can get. I mean, right now, we're doing it case by case. But, uh, the technology can certainly, um, apply here. So I, I anticipate that we'll have some aids.
Okay, well, I suppose I'll piggyback, uh, Commissioner Maddox. Anything we can do on for Association of Counties and from our county, uh, to really support those efforts? I think that would be great. We need the contact tracing to be as robust as possible as we're coming out of this. Um, so Claudia, yes, 45 days on the job. Thank you to you and, you and your team. I'd love to see the, those county reports you mentioned. Um, I'm gonna move quickly, Mr. Chair. I just have to say that we should all take a note that Andy said Congress is moving at lightning speed. I'm not sure we've heard that in my lifetime. So, um, that's good. This is the time for it. Um, so thanks for tracking that. Um, Chastity, I had one question for you. You mentioned quasi-judicial. Um, is that a, do we have, uh, any different approach on public hearings? If we are going to have public hearings? And we also had some email exchange about town hall meetings, um, virtual town halls that other groups might, um, might host and want us to participate in. And I know those are two separate issues, but just getting it into our general conversation here. If there was a town hall that we did not participate in or if it was noticed by an organization as a public meeting, um, would that help cure some of those issues?
Uh, sure. So, um, to address both of those. First, with the quasi-judicial proceedings, um, the, the modification to the board policy that the board ratified as part of the consent agenda is sufficient for conducting, uh, public hearings? Um, one question that has come up, though, that, uh, board policy does provide that public hearings will be held at 6:00 P. M. We do have several public hearings on the agenda, uh, for the meeting on the 28th. Since we will be, um, soliciting public comment in advance of that meeting and not having, uh, in-person, uh, public comment. The question has come up about whether there's a desire of, um, the commission to move the public hearing portion of the agenda up in time. Um, so that is one outstanding question. But there are no other procedural requirements, um, to comply with sunshine law or process for public hearings. For quasi-judicial proceedings, it's a little bit different because you have, uh, the exchange of documents, you have, um, to swear in witnesses, you have, uh, cross-examination, um, you have all of those sorts of extra, um, procedural components to a quasi-judicial proceeding that we, uh, have, uh, accounted for in the modifications to the board policy. So that's what will be coming, um, pretty soon. Um, probably in the form of a proclamation for later ratification by the board. Um, because we want to keep those proceedings moving to the extent that we can. Uh, some of them are sensitive, time-sensitive in nature. Um, so for the town hall aspect of things, I would say that, um, the requirements of the sunshine law generally still apply. If more than one member of the commission is going to be attending a town hall, um, then that notice would need to be, um, sent out. Um, we would talk about the same things we always do related to, um, more than one member of this collegial body, um, talking about something that could possibly come before the board and constitute, uh, a sunshine law violation. So we would, uh, talk about those and address those on a case-by-case basis, depending on the particular, um, circumstances and, uh, specifics of what is being proposed.
Okay, thank you. I, just for everyone else, um, you may have been invited to the INE Town Hall a couple of Fridays ago. And I talked to Felina, uh, about noticing those types of town halls in the future if they want city and county commissioners to participate. But I directed her back to city and county attorneys. So, um, that's where that question came from. So, Chastity, thank you. Thank you for your first meeting. Uh, Mr. Chair, the only, I'm saving my questions, um, about, uh, Carney Center and homelessness here for the end. Um, so this is my last bit. Shinkton, um, I've been in conversation with, uh, folks over at the Carney Center for a few weeks, even before the task force was set up. And the amount of work that you all have accomplished and the coordination is, is just phenomenal. Um, ran through some of the numbers with, uh, Liza from the Carney Center yesterday. And it is, it is a remarkable effort that you all have done. And as Commissioner Proctor and others said, we haven't had anyone test positive. And I think that could be due to your efforts. Um, there were some questions about, um, Salvation Army, kind of what our next step. So thank you for filling that piece out. The continuum of care coordination, it's my understanding, I mean, they cover, uh, nine-plus county regions, something like that. So they're coordinating both with Leon, but also with our surrounding counties. Because a lot of folks in normal times come in from other counties, um, to get services here. So can you, can you talk about the regional coordination and what's happening there a little bit?
Yeah, so the Big Ben Continuum of Care holds weekly meetings. There's actually one tomorrow with our regional partners to hear what's going on in their front regarding homeless. Um, for the most part, um, outside of Leon County, there hasn't been, uh, a significant amount of cases. Uh, they've also experienced, not experiencing any cases of homeless that have, um, tested positive in those areas either. Um, but, uh, we continue to, we continue to, uh, keep, keep in contact with them every, every week, um, through the Big Ben C O C. Um, so that way we're aware of, of what's going on with them. And we also, also, of course, um, share with them, uh, information about, uh, CDC guidelines, recommendations that are coming from our own health department and kind of hearing from, um, from them what some of their, their concern and needs may be.
Okay, that's great. This is just one point that stood out to me because, um, we do see a lot of people coming from other counties. And so we may see an increase in our numbers at times. Um, so I think the efforts you're taking with Salvation Army and others are, are very timely. So thank you. The last question, I don't know if this is for you or Vince for you, but, um, I think I noted in the item that we're allocating $300,000 from both city and county to support, um, the rehousing efforts. Um, I will say the diversion, I also talked to Randy Nicholas at 211, who's doing a fantastic job. And the coordination on that pit, piece to divert people from homelessness is just, or from the shelters, is phenomenal. Um, so I, I think there was some question about whether or not we would need an entire $600,000, but that's the benchmark that we've got right now. FEMA reimbursement is fantastic. Y'all did a great job. Is there a way or an opportunity for us to look at any remaining dollars left over from, I would hope, the city contribution as well to cover things that FEMA may not cover? Um, if it's security, if it's food services, I mean, everything that you're having to coordinate with food services. It just seems like we've got this dedicated piece of the pie for, um, our homeless response right now. And I want to make sure we have an opportunity to look at remaining funds to keep them in that pocket with the COVID response. Is that acceptable or?
Yes, and the way that, and Commissioner Dozier, the way that we structured that, it, it was, and I think as you appropriately noted, it's an up to amount that we were seeking. Uh, and the way we were planning on doing it was obviously just spending up to the amount, uh, authorized of the $300,000. We, I think it's a fairly safe bet that, um, some amount of that will be needed to, um, stand up the Salvation Army site. So we have that, uh, capacity there of up to 50. Um, with the ability to, uh, potentially expand for our congregate site. And on the, um, isolation, uh, COVID-positive homelessness site, where, uh, also it, it is considerable dollars that you would expend if you go down that road. Um, we're hopeful, we, we, we don't have to expend a, a dollar of, of that. So, uh, again, uh, this is all in, in preparation for that. Uh, but certainly, we could receive whatever other direction that you might have on that. But we were planning on the way it is now, just to, um, have an up to, uh, uh, amount of dollars for the time being. And we could, and obviously, we'll report back to the board on, uh, on what we're experiencing.
All of that sounds good for now. I would just say that if we need that isolation hotel and if we need security for that, that may be an additional cost or things like that. Um, so I'd like to kind of keep a placeholder with remaining funds of those $300,000. Again, I hope the city does the same for this particular portion of the response because there may be unknown costs. So, um, Mr. Chair, that, that was, we had a lot of updates there from a lot of different people. So I tried to keep it relatively short, but thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. County Administrator, for everything and your entire team.
All right, I've got Commissioner Dozier, I mean, pardon me, Commissioner Lindley, followed by Commissioner Minor.
Okay, oh, thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Um, yeah, we've got a lot, actually, a lot of need in this particular item. I think, uh, one of the things that I'm most concerned about is what Alan Rosenzweig talked about, which is how this, uh, budget's going to be affected on down the road. Because there are so many unknowns, uh, lower gas taxes, lower sales taxes, uh, and more expenses. So, uh, Commissioner Dozier, I hope you're right that that, um, $300,000 and $600,000 isn't fully needed for what it will be. But I, my bet is it'll be that and more, uh, coming along. Uh, at this point, I know the item has several, uh, shifts in our budget process, which I think we're probably going to need because we'll be reevaluating frequently. I, I'm assuming over the next several days and weeks. Uh, so I would like to do the order of business that we really need to do first, which is authorize that $300,000 for the Carney Center, which will be, as I understand it, reimbursed by FEMA up to 75%. So I'm, I would move, um, it's, uh, items one through five, which takes in not only the $300,000, but also some shifting of our schedule for our budgeting for this year.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Uh, um, I've got Commissioner Minor on deck. Commissioner Lindley, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, I, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Uh, just wanted to reiterate what everyone else has already said. Just a tremendous job, uh, from our county administrator and, uh, and, and the emergency management team, uh, Andy. Everybody, I mean, just really terrific coordination, uh, with some very uncertain times. So, um, kudos to everybody that's been working very hard. Um, I'm trying to think several weeks ahead and, and trying to, trying to visualize what we're going to be needing to do in the coming weeks. Um, and one thing I wanted to talk with Christina about is, is raise the prospect of having a, um, open-for-business planning task force. Whether that's something that's run within O E V or, or, or is comprised of members from the chambers. Um, I think that's something for us to maybe get on top of now. There are governors in some states, um, and cities that are, that have already gone through either a peak or a plateau. And so they're starting to assemble their task forces on what exactly opening the year, their local economy is going to be. We're weeks away from doing that. Um, I don't want to mislead anyone by, by thinking that, that is imminent, uh, because it's not coming soon. But I think there's some benefit toward us assembling a group of people right now to take a look at what other states, other cities are doing, other counties are doing. Taking those lessons that they learn along the way so that when we start to see the light at the end of the tunnel, uh, we can then learn already, we will have already learned some of the work that's being done around the country so that we're best positioned to, uh, open the economy or to, to start relaxing some of these, um, distancing guidelines in a way that, that, that benefits from the decisions that other localities and, and counties have made. Christina, have you, have you had to think it? I know there's a lot of steps we're going through right now that are more immediate, more urgent. But if you had a chance to think about that at all?
Yes, it was, uh, yes, Commissioner, that was a conversation my team and I have daily too. And we know that on a state level, they have just announced the reset task force, the restore economic strength through employment and tourism. Um, several different associations across our community, including the, um, Florida Association of Counties has been involved in that as well. Um, so I've reached out to our Economic Development Organization, F A B C, to ensure that they'll be involved in, I think, locally here too, um, under your direction. That would be a good, um, a good path forward.
Great, thanks. And, Mr. Chairman, if I can say one more thing. I, I think is, um, there's benefit in having something mapped out ahead of time. Uh, one of the comments from citizens, uh, that was emailed to us mentioned that, that, you know, with, with a couple of weeks' advance notice, for example, on a, on a plan, um, that gives our, our local businesses a chance to kind of figure out what they need to do. Um, in, in, in plan in terms of how they ramp up their, their staff, for example. So the, the more, um, advanced notice we can give, uh, our local businesses here in Leon County, I think the better, the better off they'll be too. So thank you very much for, I had a sense you'd be, uh, thinking and talking about that already. But, um, anything that, that we can do to help you as a commission to, to help out with that, um, I'm sure that you'd get a lot of, uh, support. Thank you.
Good question. And I think Christina, we can probably take that up tomorrow too at some point. It sounds like we can la- certainly elaborate on that, yeah. Um, I've got Commissioner Proctor, then back to Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Minor, uh, first of all, Commissioner Minor, before I go there. Um, Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox, I think I was on the mute before. And, uh, and when you gave your response to me, uh, I think what I was saying in your letter was that the coronavirus, uh, goes to jurisdictions that have populations in excess of 500,000 and greater. And that's why, uh, we, our community has been written out. And I'm, I'm, I know that your letter was going to say that it should not go through, even the money that we've gotten will go through the legislature to be funneled to communities that are 500,000 or greater. But we need legislation from the federal government because all of us got to file some taxes and all of us pay some. Why can't we benefit when we've been hurt too? So I was speaking to the, um, parameters which set qualifications. And the majority of, of your counties here in Florida, uh, simply ain't going to qualify. And the next round should not have anything like that, uh, that deters the state capital, uh, our county, and other counties in Florida, the majority, not to get any help from Congress. That, that was the point, sir, that I was making. I think that in terms of Commissioner Minor's comment, Vince, um, I believe that, um, this is, this is a tremendous narrative here. And that, um, our staff writes a tremendous narrative from the beginning to the middle. And they're writing it, uh, not looking in hindsight. But this is an incredible piece of background and analysis as we are in the middle of the go-through. And I think that at the end of this, Vince, as you all did with the Post, uh, Michael Post, some of those other big storms we've had, you've gone around the community and you all have had, uh, town hall meetings. have had town hall meetings in various areas to share and to capture what happened, the losses, how are we going to mitigate against the losses, and to talk about your action plan moving forward. We've seen that tighten up with Mr. Kevin Peters and others. It's gotten tighter, our communications people, it's gotten tighter and tighter every round of storms. And I think that if we all step back and look at this, this document in front of us is a major piece of work that can be respected anyplace in the whole wide world as we are going through the go-through. So I salute, and I know good work when I see it, I really do, and I salute the piece of work in front of us. But I think, to Commissioner Minor's point, I believe, Vince, that while you have an incredible, extraordinary, excellent team that can capture, understand in real time dynamics that are occurring, and they can put it on paper. But what I think I hear Commissioner Minor saying is that when we get through this thingy, we need to sit down with more than the usual normative folk, because Florida State and FAMU, TCC, a piece of our economy, as you've laid out in this thingy, this presentation, a part of our economy ain't flourishing right now because students are not here. And to the extent that not only from the medical perspective, but the economic as well, are not integrated into what we're doing now, we just need more people around the table in the summary and gathering from education to health to banking to state to, everybody's a part of our universe, local. And I think that that, to me, not trying to say what Minor was saying, I'm just saying that it makes a more complete thought to, in the final analysis, that we sit everybody down. And also just in closing, say that it's the surge. If we do anything with what y'all got here, I think, how do we perfect this real fast and grow up real quick? And if the surge, when students come back and things reconvene and it explodes, what have we learned real quickly? What have we learned and how do we move forward in the future? Those are my final comments, Mr. Chairman, on item 11. Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Proctor, and too, let me just assure you and the commission that, as you referenced, much like we've done those very thorough after-action reports, we'll be doing that for this event as well. And I just made a note to make sure that we include the types of things that we've heard today, especially with respect to some of the outreach efforts that you discussed. So yes, that after-action will be coming, so I just wanted to assure you of that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I've got Commissioner Maddox up by my left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's going to be, it's going to be brief. I just wanted to, I just wanted to reassure Commissioner Proctor, I just spoke with fact staff, and just as I suspected, we were already in the process of putting together a letter for that as well, Commissioner Proctor. So know that the fact staff and administrative team are working on combating all the things that you're concerned about, and we definitely agree with all the assessments that you made. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor of the motion as proposed by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner Dozier, signify by saying aye, and raise your hand just for a little bit of body language, okay? All right, it looks like it passes unanimously, so we've got visual and audio there, just to be sure. All right, next up, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number seeks your consideration to allow CHSP to utilize current year grant funding from the county to address anticipated needs related to COVID-19. Let me say first, too, that we've received 17 comments on this item, all of which were distributed to you, and that was at the time of this meeting. They've been posted to our website and they've been entered into the record for this meeting. As I mentioned, Commissioners, the county has been actively engaging our human services agencies throughout this crisis to ensure that we continue to address the evolving needs of the community and the needs that they're facing. However, many of the agencies are facing significant unexpected challenges in continuing to deliver their services. That won't be a surprise to anyone. As a result, some of our providers have suspended programs and services while others are having a much higher volume of services and are encouraging additional expenses outside of the norm. As you'll see discussed in this item, we have been able to provide several agencies, have been able to help several agencies by providing advances to their CHSP funding and facilitating budget amendments, which have been, which we've been able to address administratively. However, there are additional opportunities that we're proposing from you based on the feedback that we have received from them, to provide additional assistance to those agencies that require approval from the board. So specifically, Commissioners, this item seeks your authorization to adjust existing grant agreements with the agencies to allow them to reallocate current year funds to more effectively address the community needs relative to COVID-19. We're also recommending allowing CHSP on these agencies to carry forward unspent grant dollars to the following fiscal year for programs that may have been temporarily suspended. These are big changes, but we believe appropriate given the circumstances. As you'll find in the materials, Commissioners, we have greatly abbreviated the process for the agencies this year. We've extended deadlines and will not be conducting site visits and a whole lot more, again, to reflect the conditions that they are facing currently. With all these changes, those made as well as those that we're recommending to you, advancing budgets, extending deadlines, carrying forward unspent dollars, abbreviating the process, all of these have been actively communicated and coordinated with the UPHS and the agencies themselves. We're happy to answer any questions you might have, Commissioners, and we're happy to accept any additional direction that the board may deem necessary. With that, I will pause you, recommending options one through four, and like I said, we're very happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, I've got Commissioner Proctor, pardon me, Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much. Of course, you guys know my capacity as with the Boys and Girls Club, the Big Band, we may receive benefit from this, and so in a balance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself in this vote after speaking with our county attorney. She called me early and I appreciate her doing that, so I'm going to accuse myself in this vote as well as the discussion when it comes to this item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I've got Commissioner Proctor, followed by Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, there are four options before us tonight. The first option, the county administrator is merely alerting us as to the needs of the Human Services Partnership Agencies and their impacts with COVID-19. We're pretty clear, we're very aware of just what this report encompasses. Option two is asking us to allow for the repurposing and the refocusing of the contracts which we have in place with these agencies, and that is to allow the purpose and the part of the focus to cover and to address COVID-19 operational needs. Option three is a carry forward of previous monies to be also utilized for COVID. And option four extends contracts down to December 31. And in particular, I believe that we have to keep our dukes in the air for any surge potential going down to that period. So recognizing the simplicity of what has been presented, the need that they're not acting outside the scope of original agreements, but noticing the overall need of which COVID-19 has swept our community with, I would like to place into motion that we receive and back the recommendation of options one, two, three, and four. That is my motion, Mr. Chair.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. I've got Commissioner Minor up, then Commissioner Dozier.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all, I'm sure you've read a lot of the comments that came in during the public input phase up until eight o'clock last night. We also got some more today regarding the process for the application, the extensions and all that. Just wanted to ask the county administrator, because you and I discussed this during the briefing, Mr. County Administrator, could you talk for a bit about how the application deadline process worked and the decision-making involved in, we're living in very unusual times, right? And could you explain to us as well as to the public that might be listening, how that decision process took place?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and also I may ask Shinkton to jump in with more details as the staff to this, but in short, Commissioners, you all know that we extended the initial CHSP application deadline for all agencies. It was initially set to be March 20th. We extended that to March 31st, again, for all agencies. When the March 31st deadline came, we noticed that we had agencies that we were working with in the official response capacity to COVID-19 who did not turn in their applications by the extended deadline. That caught our attention. The staff is very thorough, so they called all of the agencies, not, they didn't handpick anyone, they called all the agencies that did not complete their applications. That was only a number of six, a very small number. They called those agencies to determine, we knew what Salvation Army was doing with us, that was one of the agencies we were working with in official capacity. We called to check in with others to find out what their issues might be. And again, given the unique circumstances, rather than open it up just for Salvation Army, which we felt like was appropriate under the circumstances in their official capacity, and they requested that specifically, I should note, they requested that of us, and we felt like it was appropriate, rather than just open for them, we felt like it was equitable to open it for all six agencies who were previously funded but failed to complete their applications by the 31st deadline. That's really it, and that's what went into that. Going any further than that, obviously, is what brought us here today. And however, we felt like we met the needs that we were hearing from the agencies directly.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. County Administrator, was there a discussion about, as you all know, we've received some comments from a lot of nonprofit organizations here, a lot of CHSP members that were concerned about it being open for six, but not for everybody else. Mr. County Administrator, can you talk about, was there a discussion about whether or not to open up the, our extended deadline again for anybody versus just the six?
No, it was, when we initially, we had a webinar for all agencies as we were approaching the 31st deadline, just to check in with all agencies to see if there were any issues, if people were going to be able to meet the 31st deadline. The overwhelming response was that they were going to be able to make that, and we understand that everybody was having difficulties, and that's why we were doing all the extra effort, communications and that sort of thing. So when the deadline came, and again, the great majority of them had completed their applications and just a few remained, that's why we opened it up just for those who weren't able to complete the application again. The intent was Salvation Army, who we knew was working in the official response capacity with us, and we didn't want to open it just for them, but opened it for a very short period of time, again, to the other agencies who were not, all other agencies who were not able to complete their applications, which again was only six.
Yeah, I consider myself to have a unique perspective on this, because I've been the CEO of one of the nonprofits, one of the CHSP partners that has received funding. I've participated in writing that application with my team. I've also been on a citizens review team, reviewing those applications, and now I'm on the county commission, who actually goes in and ratifies the recommendations by the CRT team. So I've got that type of full lifecycle perspective on this. And so as I'm reading the comments from a lot of nonprofits about the process, and some of them, some complaints about the process, I think I've got a very thorough, comprehensive understanding of how this all works from multiple different angles. I do think, I truly think the county administrator, the county staff that work on this, as well as on the city side, do a tremendous job when it comes to working within the CHSP process, working with the applicants, reaching out to those applicants as they are working on their applications. When I was over at Second Harvest, we got calls from the CHSP staff when checking up on our application, and I mean, that's what they do, they follow up with the, with the CHSP applicants. It's a very well-done effort. When I read the idea, that when I read the news that six agencies had been given that extended deadline, I only knew one agency. I tried, I don't know the other five, because I purposely didn't want to make a decision knowing what those six agencies were. I couldn't help but know the identity of one, but my first inclination was to basically cut off those six applicants, reject the notion that those six applicants could apply past the deadline, because there's been a long history within CHSP of people coming minutes late on filing their application and being denied funding because of that. We've been very, very rigid, very strict on that deadline, as it means to be fair to everybody that applies. So my first inclination was to say, I'm sorry, guys, but there's a precedent for this. You six applicants are no longer, you will not be allowed to submit. But we are living in very unusual times. There are life and death decisions that are being made, and of the one agency I know is on that six, I mean, there are decisions that will affect people's lives based on what they do and what they plan. That takes higher priority than meeting the CHSP deadline. So as strong as I feel about how rigid that deadline for the application should be adhered to, we are living in very unusual times. So I agree with the county administrator and the CHSP team's decision to extend the deadline for those agencies that are directly working and being involved in the COVID response. I wish that what we had, hindsight's 2020. I think it may have been better for us to open it up to any agency, to go back in and revise or improve their applications as opposed to just the six, but I understand what the CHSP team was doing, and I do believe they're working in good faith, very talented people, I know them well, they do a great job. So I think going forward would be helpful for us. If we do, God forbid, we have a second wave of COVID come next CHSP application time, if we extend it for some, we extend it for everybody. I think that's an important message to provide to everybody, so that no one feels that some agencies are not out, not able to go back in and improve their applications whereas the others are. I recognize the situation that we're all in, and I commend Shinkton and the whole team for working very hard and doing the best they can under circumstances. I'm a big fan of what they do, but I think going forward, it'd be helpful to either open it up and extend it for everybody or cut it off for everybody. That's one thing. How to best rectify the situation that we're in now? I'd recommend that not every nonprofit's going to be happy with this, but what I'd recommend is that if we extend the application for seven days to everybody, that gives the all applicants that have applied the ability to go in and improve their application, knowing now, I mean, COVID is changing every single day, our response to COVID is changing every single day. They can go into those applications, make some tweaks to that based on what their projections are for their response to COVID. I think that could be helpful for them in their application. So I don't know if this rises to level of emotion, maybe staff can make this decision or could do this on their own, but I'd like to see what the rest of the commission believe in terms of making sure we have equity in this situation as best we can by extending the deadline for seven more days. When the county administrator, I talked about this earlier, he thought that would still work within the application timeline and the allocation of funds and the CRT teams. When the county administrator, I talked about this earlier, he thought that would still work within the application timeline and the allocation of funds and the CRT teams. But I'll come back in after everyone's had a chance to speak, but I think that might be the best way for us to remedy the situation, so that every single agency, even with that extension that they had, they can still go back in and make improvements to the application in whatever way they see fit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, good comments, Commissioner Minor. You're, as you pointed out, you're probably in a different spot than the majority of us, so I appreciate your comments. So I've got Commissioner Dozier followed by Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Minor, I do appreciate your comments, and certainly you've been on the ground with us with CHSP applications more than most of us. We've got an empty chair for Commissioner Maddox, who recused himself, so he's in that mix right now. I, I want to echo your comments that, and I said this in an email to the county administrator this weekend. I fully believe our staff is working incredibly hard, with the best of intents, to make all of these different things work. I didn't say that properly, but they're managing CHSP, they're managing, you know, the homeless task force, they're doing a lot of different things. And of all the people I've talked to since Friday, and the emails I've seen, the, some of the emails I've seen, I think in general, as you said, Commissioner Minor, a lot of people support having Salvation Army particularly in the mix. There's a recognition of how critical they are to the COVID response and in general. I do understand, Ms. County Administrator, you and I have talked about this a lot, I understand the reasoning for doing this. And as I shared with you, I simply disagree with the approach to reach out to six agencies and open the portal for only those six agencies. One, based on precedent. We've had the, two of the top ones that stand out, Oasis and Second Harvest, have missed deadlines in the past by minutes in some cases. And we, we had no adjustments. And I think feeding people is important every day. Obviously, now the workload is tremendously, you know, increased beyond normal times. But we, we did something different at that point. We went to capital expenses instead of reopening the CHSP portal for one agency. So I think there is precedent. I've also heard from a lot of agencies, I'm guessing you all have seen this in some of the comments, that made choices. To a person, they've all said the 10-day extension, 11-day extension was exceptionally helpful. And they meet the deadline. That's what you heard on the webinar, on the calls, other things like that, they're going to make it work if they can. But they did make some choices. Some organizations didn't apply for Promise Zone or certain programs because time was limited, so they got their primary application in. To me, that may qualify someone for an extension, another extension, or qualify them to be in this category of six. And yet, let me, let me stop here. If they put in one application for CHSP for the normal programs, but didn't put in a Promise Zone application because they didn't have time to do a new one, didn't have access to data at their office, whatever it might be, I've heard different things. That person also, or agency also, made a choice that is hurting their funding in the future, their potential to get funding in the future. My point here is that I think there were choices made by agencies who did meet the extended deadline, show they were also struggling under the conditions in recent weeks. And while not everybody has those same challenges, I think there's enough that should make us kind of take a step back and see if Commissioner Minor's suggestion for an extra seven days might be the appropriate way to go, or something else. Again, I, I do think, and up till Friday afternoon, everybody I talked to had said they were just thrilled by the agenda item we had, they were very happy about that. They were thrilled by the work with our county staff and city staff on CHSP, 100% positive comments. It was just about the portal and this unprecedented response to open it for only a limited number of agencies. So with that comment, Mr. County Administrator, I do have one question, maybe a slightly different approach than Commissioner Minor. And this is just something that's come out of a lot of the emails and everything, and I, you and I didn't get a chance to talk about it. There is a suggestion to extend funding for agencies who've already received CHSP funding, extend flat funding for FY21, basically just hold it level, not go through a full-blown CHSP process at this time. That would eliminate the need to do virtual community.
State visits.
Teams, other things like that. And it would, can you all still hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So it would also give some assurance for their budgets in, in the next year, if we did that right now. Our staff is busy, they're working on a huge number of different things. It seems like if there was a way to extend funding for the next year without going through this process, because we already have multi-year funding available, we could do something for new agencies. But I just want to hear your thoughts about that question. It feels like a win-win on both sides, and I'm not sure why we chose not to do that.
Yes, Commissioner, I'll answer that. The, first of all, let me preface all my responses by whatever the board gives us the direction to do today. Obviously, we'll take that and we will work with our city partners to, to try to gain their support for doing the same thing. And they may have to, you know, take this to the, to the city commission and that sort of thing. But, but again, I think as close as we all work on, on all of these things, I'm not sure if I've heard anything that would, that would be, you know, not acceptable. I can't say that for sure, I just had to throw that out there. The, with respect to the holding basically the same funding allocations from the, the previous year, the reason we didn't accept that was because that came up on the webinar, is the way that I understand it, from one agency. And that really did not have any traction at the time. There was not a follow-up request made, there was not a proposal made by UPHS or anyone else to that effect. It was simply a suggestion by one agency. That call ended with the agencies, again, and I emphasize overwhelmingly, suggesting that an extension of the deadline to March 31st worked for all of the agencies, or about 95% of them. And my only other clarification is just that, again, when the portable was, portal was opened, it wasn't, in our thinking, not. All the agencies who didn't complete their applications, which was only that six. That being said, again, whether it's going to the aforementioned proposal or an extension of time, those are all options that upon board direction, we'd be very happy to facilitate.
Okay, Mr. Chair, just lastly here, I, I do think that because of how we've operated CHSP for a long time, we can't be surprised that agencies were surprised, you know, were shocked by the fact we opened the portal for six agencies and not others. But even if those six were in a special category, I think that if calls were made one-on-one, we may have uncovered some of the things we've heard in recent days. But this question aside, I think I would have had the same line of questions. And Ms. County Administrator, we've been talking about this for several weeks. I'm really happy with this item, and you and I have been talking, I'm sure the others have been talking with you as well. We needed flexibility for current year funding, because if, if folks can't do a program they have, they have received money for, they need to be able to just operate the nonprofit and continue to provide services. If we, if a majority of us, I'll put it this way, are interested in seeing our nonprofits as not-for-profit businesses, they employ a tremendous amount of people, they're also a safety net locally, so they can help those folks that are impacted in other ways from COVID. It seems like keeping them in a place where they can provide that service and have some assurance on their budget, and maybe on the local end, is, is the easiest way to get that done right now as they wait for other grants and funding from the federal state foundations, whomever. If we're going to talk about nonprofit support tomorrow at OEV, we, if we're interested in this at all, I don't see how one of the easiest things we do, one of the low-hanging things, is make the CHSP process easier. And if it also reduces the burden on our staff by not conducting virtual citizen review teams and things like that, so they can focus on other COVID response issues, that could be a win for our staff as well. This is an ongoing process, we've, we've done it well for many years, we've made improvements in years. So I really, I would like to contemplate extending fiscal year 20 funding for 21, acknowledging that it may be a problem for some agencies, if they applied for more money in the next year, this would, they wouldn't be happy about this. But I think it could give it some assurance and really address those concerns about not doing their best work in the applications, quite frankly, because they're buying computers for school kids and feeding school kids and everything else in the world right now. So, Mr. Chair, I'm not going to make a motion right now, I too want to hear from others, but I would like to come back to this after we address Commissioner, or I think whoever made the first motion, thank you.
All right, I've got Commissioner Lindley followed by Commissioner Proctor. Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Lindley.
You know, I was really surprised when the emails started coming in discussing the, the extension for those six, including the Salvation Army. Because when I read the item originally and thought about it, it's like 1,000%, the essence is flexibility. All of the pieces of it are flexible, they're in regard to how the grants can be spent now, things that were for programs or can be spent for operations. Very few programs are going on in some cases. We're shifting around their ability to, their dates and their time of spending money. I just felt like that's what this is about, it's flexibility. And if, yes, it's unfortunate if six were not able to meet it, I think we did the humane thing to say, get it in now, it's time to give them a call. I mean, going forward, you know, we can make some changes if we need to. But for now, I think we need to get this going and, and make some decisions. I know that some of the nonprofits aren't going to be happy, but I don't think that they are directly affected by the fact that the other six have had a chance to fill in their applications. These are organizations that have gotten funded in the past, they're not outliers who are coming in that we don't know, we haven't worked with in the past. So to me, I don't want to extend it, I think we need, you know, we need, they need the flexibility, and we need to get going on these things. We don't need to delay it, I don't think, even another seven days. It's unfortunate things didn't work as smoothly, but nothing is working smoothly now, everybody's anxious. I, I just support Commissioner Proctor's motion, and I think it's time for us to settle in and get this one done and, and get the flexibility to all of the agencies that they seem, they seem to want that part of it. So I would support one through four, as, as we have, and we can talk about changing the CHSP process later if necessary, thank you.
All right, I've got Commissioner Proctor followed by Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask county administrator, what has he heard so far? What is your sense of hearing, Vince? Which Commissioner Minor, between Minor and Dozier's comments, what is the sense of balance there?
And thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I mean, the only thing I think that I could say to that is genuinely that should the board decide, this is one of these things, and we understand that there are a lot of moving parts here. This was as comfortable as we felt like we could go, and we felt very comfortable doing, doing so. And if you'd asked me in retrospect in 2020, hindsight, would we do anything different? The answer would be absolutely not. However, it's the board's prerogative. If you all determine that there is additional flexibility that you'd like to, to, to give us the direction to implement, whatever that might be, an extended deadline for everyone, or some of the other options that have been discussed, we welcome that direction. So again, if that helps, that's kind of where we are. We were trying to address problems that we felt were, were actual problems in the process, and we felt like we made accommodations for all of those along the way. And, and however, again, we're very, we're very receptive to any other direction the board may have.
Okay, I think I'm very sensitive to Commissioner Lindley's comments. And I think that sometimes we want to hear through the right ear. And the ear in which I heard the county attorney, I'm sorry, the county administrator just now, I was listening through the ear of compassion, the one that was about inclusivity. And while recognizing that there are rules which we try to normalize our processes, the county administrator knows in times like these, we need every one of those entities to remain strong frontline participants in the life and health of our community. If my hearing of what the county administrator's explanation has been, then I think that Commissioner Minor's comments of extending it not only for the six, but extending it for everyone, it makes sense, and it is consistent with my steadfast guidance to our commission over time, that we always try to be equitable and fair. What is that in a moment like this? I think in a moment like this, when people have children at home, spouses, significant others at home, I've read that tensions are running high in households, just unexpected challenges, that a lot of things could be thrown off. And we have the situations where schools have been closed and children are learning by way of the same way in which we're communicating today, all these new things, I think that our staff does so many things well, so many things right. And it seems that the intent of their hearts was of a heartfelt nature. So I think that Commissioner Lindley, and I really want us to be on board together, that, and I think Commissioner Dozier as well, that extending the deadline of, let me tell you what the, what the real deadline issue now, is the sense that on May 1, we can hit a switch and all will be well, and we can send people back to work, that's a deadline. And in fact, it is a line that may cause many to be there if we all go back. So in the interest of what we're here to do, and that's to keep great entities like what we have, and we're trying to provide, and if those six and other entities are concerned, I think it's concern about their revenue stream, 16 million people is unemployed, those people concerned about continuity, stability, and sustainability. And if I was in that position, Mr. Minor, I would be concerned with 16 million people out of jobs with continuity, stability, and sustainability. And if we can do anything to help continuity, stability, and sustainability in six days, we'll give everyone that fair shot, I'm for it. So I don't know. So I don't know if my motion has to be amended to, to, to encompass that, Madam Attorney, if I have to do that, but I think that we're trying to keep a flow and not allow for the esoteric standards in situations and moments like this. These esoteric standards should not prevail against this tide of human suffering and calamity which has befell our community. We're trying to maintain stability. That's why tomorrow, we're going to look at putting some money in some people who are facing challenges. That's what we did with the I A two, three weeks ago, when we tried to put some money. It's because we're trying to maintain continuity, stability, and sustainability. And I yield now to either Vince or to the county's attorney, Ms. Chairman, that my motion might encompass both thoughts.
You'd have to amend your motion. They're both nodding their head here, yeah.
Okay. Well, to the secondor, may I amend my motion to include extending in the language that Mr. Minor said by whatever amount, seven days in this process? Is that right, Rick?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir.
Commissioner Dozier, you were the secondor, I think.
No, I was.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Linley.
I was. Right, and I'd just like to ask, yeah, I can't exactly tell where things are going, but if we extend another week, it is going to slow down for, by a week, what these agencies can do with their funds. I mean, I think time is of the essence. I, you know, I don't think another week, you know, I, to me, no, another week is a delay that's not necessary. They want, the motion as it is, is to give them the flexibility to, you know, to be able to move ahead and use their funds that we, they now have in different ways than are, were originally contemplated. So to me, another week seems, I just don't understand really the virtue of that, except, I mean, it does give a, you know, it goes back to, to the rules and regulations that we originally had and that we'd like to adhere to, and I assume we will in the future. But right now, it seems like that's a delay that is unnecessary. My...
I got a question on point.
So that's my question.
On point, Commissioner Minor.
Yeah, this is, this is diff, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, I think the, the motions that were recommended, I mean, the options that were recommended and discussion we're having right here are mutually exclusive. So they will have the flexibility of using their current fiscal year C H S P dollars with the flexibility that we're going to vote on per Commissioner Proctor's motion. The, what we're talking about, what I believe we're talking about now is the application for the next fiscal year C H S P funding cycle.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. All right, I just want to slow things down.
Can, can we separate those, Mr. Chairman? Can we just separate them?
Why don't we get a reading here from the administrator about what, where this, how's this going to play out? I'm not quite sure I follow.
No, again, I just do, I mean, if, if it helps just to clarify, it would be the motions that are before you now, plus with, with the additional extension of the deadline for all agencies for seven days. And Commissioner Minor, I think is, is correct in that it accommodates both the current year flexibility as well as next year. It, it, it's just a matter of, it won't, it won't impede the, the agencies in the current fiscal year. It will, it, it will just compress the, the timeline a little bit, but it, it doesn't, that's, that's not enough to constitute an issue for us in terms of the application timeline.
All right. We've been here three and a half hours. I've got, go ahead, I've got Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Minor, and Commissioner Jackson teed up for more comments. So just a, just a note of time.
Mr. Chair, I can be very brief because I had raised my hand when Commissioner Linley, you made your comments earlier, and it, it was coming to the point that Commissioner Minor just made. The, the options on the table are about current year funding, we're talking about next year's funding. And Mr. County Administrator, that first window for the six agencies, it was open until 5:00 PM today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this, I, I love this. Commissioner Proctor, thank you for adding it into your motion. I think this will help those agencies who say, made a choice not to submit a promised own application in addition to their prime, they'll have time to do that. So this does help, and I just want to reiterate what Commissioner Minor and others have said. We're all working on unprecedented times. I mean, this is fast-moving, and it takes some flexibility. So I'm glad we had an opportunity to talk through it today, and the item for F Y 20 is phenomenal. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Dozier, I want to clarify, is that, I second for Commissioner Proctor's motion, which he amended, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought Commissioner Linley was okay with it now, but you're not going to second.
If it doesn't slow, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought she was okay with it, but I'll add a second if you want a second second.
Thank you. I just, just some clarity there. Okay, I've got Commissioner Minor and then Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to reiterate that 95% of this agenda item is about giving more flexibility to our C H S P partners. And that's a testament to the, the C H S P team that really worked very hard, very fast to, to create this agenda item to give these agency partners of ours more flexibility with, in the COVID crisis. So that's, I think, a very important point for all of us to, to recognize. Now for the other 5% that we're talking about here, I, I, Commissioner Proctor, thank you very much, and Commissioner Linley, thank you also for seconding the, the amendment to the motion. I think this is the right decision. You know, our, our first priority goal for C H S P is to make sure that our tax, that taxpayer dollars are being used in the best way to get the most results in the nonprofit sector. By, by extending this deadline for another seven days, you have people that are able to go in, improve their applications, maybe even add a new program that you didn't have time to add before. So I think this is really the best step to, to accomplish the second goal of the C H S P program, which is to try to do this as fairly and as equitably as you possibly can. So I do think this is the right approach. Not every nonprofit is going to be happy with it, but I think it's the best way for us to go forward in a fair way that gives everybody a chance to go back in and improve their application, should they decide they need it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Jackson.
I'll be brief. Unprecedented times with unprecedented needs, and I cannot compliment the county administrator and county staff enough for realizing the need that is out there and coming up with some sort of mechanism for addressing the needs. The rules of the game aren't nearly as important as taking care of people right now, and I, I want our nonprofits to be aware of that as well as we proceed down this road towards rebuilding our community. Thank you, Mr. Administrator and staff.
Great. Okay, I'll weigh in real quick. I originally figured I was going to take the four, no bend, no move. Frankly, Commissioner Minor, you've got more experience in this area than the majority of us in the room, and I appreciate your comments, and you have a tendency to walk me down one path and then change gears, and so I, and I was slowly bought into the extension, which Commissioner Proctor also kind of doubled up on. I, I echo some of Commissioner Linley's comments, though, that, you know, speed is of the essence, and let's get some things done. And so after having understood that this is not going to slow the process down immensely, I'm all in. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carries. Yes, sir. Mr. Administrator, next up.
Commissioners, this item seeks your consideration to allow Bond Health Center and Neighborhood Medical Center to realign primary healthcare program funds to the current year to address the fiscal impacts related to COVID-19. As you see in your item, Bond and N M C are experiencing a significant increase in clinical demands related to the situation and have jointly requested funding from the county. Both clinics are prioritizing their services for those with critical medical needs and COVID-19 symptoms. As a result, the primary care and dental care visits, which are reimbursable through our existing contracts, have been reduced. So to address their immediate financial lead, financial need, Commissioner, this item recommends advancing a portion of the primary healthcare funding to both clinics. As recommended, the item advances, would advance, or, or the advanced funding would reflect the amount that each agency is expected to receive for the months of March, April, and May for primary care and dental visits. And Commissioners, I'll just add that since the time we went to print on this item, the U S Department of Health and Human Services announced that the two agencies are scheduled to receive a combined $1.7 million to address their needs to respond to COVID-19, which should be distributed in the next 60 to 90 days. Bond would be receiving $768,140. N M C would be receiving $931,955. That's an additional, that's in addition to the collective 140 that's already been provided to the two agencies in the previous round of federal legislation. So just wanted to get all of that out there with that. We're recommending options one and two.
Commissioner Proctor on deck. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had floated last week to the board on April 7, in my four-part relief proposal, and was seeking a million dollars due to the extraordinary drain and the strain which was on both Neighborhood and, and Bond. I was concerned last week about the disproportionate number of African Americans who reported in many broadcasts were disproportionately affected by COVID-19. Earlier today, I heard Mr. O'Brien from the hospital in my comments, which I captured, him saying that they simply refer persons who don't have physicians, the hospital refers them to call Bond and Neighborhood. And I just don't know what additional strain the hospitals referral of unfunded, I won't say mandates, but unfunded directives to people to call Bond and Neighborhood. That was very interesting to hear the C E O say that that was his protocol, basically, for people who are uninsured. Forty-some percent of the community in Leon County are actually uninsured, forty-some percent. And if these two, the two little engines that could, who continue every day to say, I think I can, I think I can, these two agencies are dealing with a lion's share of forty-some percent of uninsured people in the community, that's a tremendous load. It's my understanding when I met with the directors of Bond and Neighborhood early in April, it was their sharing with me that while what we're doing today, it seeks to advance, Commissioner Maddox, it seeks to advance payments forward, but it does not increase. So I want to make sure that this is not new money, it's just handing them money which expedites from a different quarter. And the reason that, that ask is there is because they have already expended what might have been used in this quarter, they've already expended it due to this extraordinary demand of, of COVID. And when they are the front line and the only reference of which the hospital is referring people to, I'm not certain, and I've not talked to Dr. Robinson with respect to the $768,000 and where does that leave them, or the $931, and I'm not sure if Shinkton is able to address, or Vince, are you able to address, what does the $768 and $931 do to help them with respect to coffers that have already been expended and they're bare? How does that help out? And does this set them at, at a break-even pace or what?
Sure, I'll ask Commissioner, I'll ask Shinkton to respond to that. He'd probably be in a better position to do that than me. Let me just, I will say, and he'll probably just reiterate this, that, that their request to us, again, was for the advance of, of March, April, and May, and I assume the federal dollars of the 1.7 is, is very welcomed assistance, but he may have more detail on the actual budget impact that that has on them currently. So Shinkton, you can feel free to...
Shinkton, does this suffice to cover what's been depleted or where does this leave them? We got to have them on the front line.
Yes, you're, and you're absolutely correct, Commissioner, and this has helped them tremendously. The sort of dollars that are flowing from the federal government will be, in addition to what they also received earlier, earlier this month, they also received dollars from the federal government, about $120,000 between the two of them, but these dollars right here will be very helpful. And the other thing we did was at, at the county level, when it was time for them to submit for their reimbursements for the month of February, we, we helped expedite that process so that, that way they could get those dollars into their coffers also. We have, we actually have a meeting with them, a conference call, I should say, with them on Thursday to get a better understanding of how these dollars will assist them in performing the, the task that they need between outreach as well as helping do testing as well as screening.
Okay, may I ask this technical question? I want to make sure that I'm clear. Earlier, I asked Mr. O'Brien the possibility of setting up a, a show-up station. I would like to know if any of this money possibly can be utilized for a walk-up station to get treated, even though he said you want to contain it by keeping people in cars. I don't know how to reconcile those two things. But if I'm not mistaken, Bond and Neighborhood are reimbursed based on the per-patient count, but the monies which the C R A gives out to Big Ben Cares or We Care, that money is not based on a meritorious basis or any value to standard of each person, they just get a lump sum regardless of whether they see anybody or whether they see lots of bodies. Is that accurate?
Are you speaking of We Care, Commissioner?
Yes, they're different. That, We Care is not subject to how many people they see based on the money they get, is that right?
No, it's not. With the We Care dollars, we pay for, for case manager to assist. It's not for specifically medical assistance.
So Bond, Bond and Neighborhood are actually, we're, we're reimbursing them for the actual numbers of people that they see, is that accurate?
Absolutely, yes, that's accurate.
Except, except for, except for the recommendation that's before you now, Commissioner, where we would just be giving them a bunch of money for March, April, and May, and we would dispense with the, the patient, the dollars following the patient recognizing this, yes.
Now, I, I just want to say that I heard Mr. O'Brien say earlier, and I was just listening, I, I didn't tell him what to say, I didn't write it, I just listened to what he said. He said, we do not want to perform expensive tests and a bunch of, and go through some tests that cost a lot for nothing, and we don't want to waste up that right there. So what I'm trying to say is, in terms of our reimbursement, Bond and Neighborhood is probably equally spending a lot of money on a COVID test, and it probably costs more if, if it translates that Mr. O'Brien says it costs more to treat folk and to deal with them. They also have an increased fee, amount of time, and all of that to bring about the results and find a final result. So our reimbursement does not address for the COVID patient, is not substantial enough to what our standard rate is, is what I'm trying to say. So Commissioners, I'm hopeful that after this next round of three months or whatever occurs, that we have to be mindful that they might deplete this, and though we might say that they're really pressing accelerator, but it seems that if T M H has a standard that says it costs more to deal with one of them, then they will too. We may have to come back and consider our, not just advancing money that we've already allocated, but actually increasing the allocation as well. Those are my comments, and I'll listen to others.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. I don't have a Commissioner on deck, I'll weigh in real quick. I spoke with Dr. Robinson earlier this week. I spoke with Dr. Robinson earlier this week, and clearly, as was noted in the earlier motion, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of people that are going to have needs, some we know about now, some we might not know about. And Alan Rosenzweig pointed out, though, we're going to be put in a position in the not-too-distant future where we're going to have our backs to the wall. So I'm anxious to kind of get the ball rolling. I had to entertain a motion for what's been proposed, but clearly, as time goes on, these things are going to get revisited. I don't want to get too far ahead of our skis at this point.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
All right, I have a motion, and I second that for purposes of discussion. Yeah, one through, one and two, right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the next item before you, one state for the record has two comments that have been distributed to you from the public, which have been posted on our website and entered into the official record for this meeting. Commissioners, the item before you summarizes the actions taken by the Division of Tourism in response to the anticipated fiscal impact of COVID-19 on the TDT, or the tourist development taxes collected on overnight stays in Leon County, as you all are very familiar with. And as Alan talked about earlier in the financial overview, TDT revenues from both the Division of Tourism as well as COCA are expected to take a hit. They are split 80/20 with Division of Tourism and 20% to COCA. Staff estimates nearly $2.1 million reduction in TDT collections this fiscal year, which results in a $1.65 million shortfall for tourism and a $435,000 shortfall for COCA. That's based on the one cent for COCA. This item seeks the board's acceptance of actions taken by the Division of Tourism at my direction to reduce their expenditures by $1.6 million and to balance its budget to meet the current revenue projections. There are no staff layoffs or eliminations of positions included in this 1.6 reduction. However, appropriate staffing levels would be considered should TDT revenues fall and decline much further than what we're anticipating for FY 2021. COCA has initiated a similar review of their expenses and plans to use a combination of budget cuts and fiscal and financial resources to sustain its support of the arts and culture organizations, and we support their efforts. And we're pleased to answer any questions that you might have, Commissioners. And I'll also note that we can quickly patch in Carrie Post or Ken Moore's. Either one would also be available to answer any questions you might have.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll get back to you.
I've got Commissioner Maddox on deck.
Mr. Chair, I was going to make the motion, staff recommendation.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
A second motion.
I have a second by Commissioner Lindley. I've got Commissioner Dozier, and Carrie's on deck if anybody's got questions for her. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is really well done. If Carrie is listening, I'm sure she is, Ms. County Administrator, you and I talked about this, I think they've done a great job looking for ways to reduce budget, streamline some of the contracts, other things. I mean, this is more than any other line item. Commissioner Lindley, you mentioned Alan's comments about our fiscal status, you know, all the different funds that may see some reductions. We know this is going to be first that we can kind of wrap our arms around. So I really appreciate the hard work that went into that. I support the motion and the action or the recommendations from staff. I did have, well, actually, before I get to one question, Mr. Chair, I also want to acknowledge the good work from COCA. I'm sure you all have seen how much they have worked with arts agencies to try to put things online and provide different program. Christina mentioned the Poems to Go program for takeout earlier. I think that was very creative and fun. So I think we're going to see a lot more from them in the future. So I really appreciate what Kathleen's and her team are doing, what Carrie and her team and their great work together to look at some of these issues. Because I'm on the COCA board, I've also seen more of the strategies and talk with Kathleen about that, what they're trying to do to help support organizations this year, but also thinking about the budget shortfall with their grants in the next year. I think they're on the right track. I think we can see more in the future as we play out. So for TDC, Ms. County Administrator, we had talked about one question, I don't know if we want to bring Carrie in or if we can just have this as part of the motion.
Carrie is up. We had to bring her in because when we ran through this today, her background looked better than anybody. She's showing off.
Is that Cascades Park? What is that?
I'm not surprised at all.
Lafayette! Yeah, we're marketers, you know?
Very nice. Got the logo and everything. I like it. Okay, well, Carrie, I had asked some questions about grant recipients. I know you're doing a lot of work with those large event grant recipients who had to cancel this year, Word of South, others. And I guess I have a question about how we're adjusting for those grants. I know some of it was in the item, that things, money they had already spent that, based on their contract, even if they didn't host the event, that was okay. You're tracking some other events. Going forward, if we're looking at FY 20 applications, are we going to be relying on numbers from FY 19 festivals? Like the heads and beds that qualify them as a large event or something like that? And are we providing any opportunities for flexibility of spending if, say, Shakespeare or La Moine are trying to reschedule their events this year?
Absolutely. To address the one part, we are working with a lot of the events that are looking to reschedule, that they've just postponed them because they don't know. So we're working, you know, with them and what we can to help them reschedule and rebook their events in late summer and the fall. And the funding would still be there and carry forward, I mean, or would continue when they reschedule. But as far as the events that have been canceled, we have said, and it's been, we've communicated with all of our grants that if they've expended, you know, monies this year in good faith that were in their application, they will be in reinsurance for that. We're trying to work with them in every way we can to, again, reschedule the events, but also be flexible as we possibly can with the funding and the requirement.
Okay, and for next year? I don't know when your grant cycle starts exactly, but, and this may be a decision that needs to come before the TDC board first, before it comes to us. Within the existing grant structure, will we allow people to use numbers from FY 19 and not be penalized because they didn't host an event in '20, for example? Are you already working through those steps?
Well, we are looking and currently working on the 2021 grant cycle, looking ahead. Again, obviously, right now, mostly looking more at projected funding levels, what that may potentially look like, but also the process. And yes, no one would be penalized for, you know, canceling or, you know, or rescheduling their event, and we would work with them. Whether we go back and look at previous years' grant levels, we've not gotten down to that level of detail, but that's certainly one of the options that we would include. Or even a lot of these events are known events that we funded for many years, you know? So I think, again, we would work with them and certainly would expect that type of visitation or those numbers that they would have had in previous years.
So I'm going to throw the County Administrator under the bus here for a second. I thought this question was a little premature. You're working on a lot of other things, but I asked, and Vince, you suggested, you know, bringing it up today. So I'm glad, I understand you're going to have to look at that in the future. I do think the question is coming to me and perhaps some of the others because people are already thinking about next year's budget. So at some point in the next couple of months, if we can get some assurance on that, you know, of just how we're going to approach it, I think event organizers will appreciate it. But I got to say, they're very appreciative of the steps you've already taken to help support them this year. So thank you for all your efforts on that end, and I'll just wait for the second phase. So thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. And let me assure you, no event would be penalized for this year. I can just prove that right now. No one would be penalized.
I wasn't worried about that, but just getting into our public discussion, I think, is important. So thank you, Carrie. Appreciate it. And really, great backgrounds.
Thank you.
I have Commissioner Minor on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carrie, I just wanted to say kudos. You had your entire mission for the Division of Tourism upended these last few weeks. And to go through and recognize the new dynamic and basically find 1.6 million in reductions in your budget is really a major feat. So it's pressing, but it's commendable that you were able to do this. So thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let me echo some of Commissioner Minor's comments. Yeah, Carrie, as your board member there, I mean, this completely changed the future, you know, foreseeable future for you. And so thanks for doing it in a surgical way and in an empathetic way, in a humane way, so that frankly, when we come out of this, hopefully, we'll be stronger than we started. So I have a motion, I have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Is Commissioner Proctor in the room? So we got 6-0 with Commissioner Proctor out of chambers or out of Zoom. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 15 to 16 are your only non-COVID-19 related items on the agenda. They're both here just because of the spending thresholds, and neither one of them, for the record, have any public comment cards associated with them. Item number 15 seeks your authorization to purchase two new ambulances, again, utilizing the Florida Sheriff's Association competitive contract, and this has been properly budgeted in the upcoming budget. So we have, and we have no speakers on this item. In the current budget, I'm sorry, I said upcoming, in the current budget.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Commissioner Dozier moves. I'll second it just for purposes, okay. Any discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Commissioner Proctor's still out of chamber, 6-0. Last item on the agenda, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item seeks your approval to award a bid for the Eastside Branch Library wall and roof and structural repairs to the lowest responsive bidder after a competitive procurement. And the item has been budgeted and adequate funding is available. We're recommending option one.
Commissioner Dozier, would you like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
This is your district? All right, Commissioner Lindley seconded it.
Happy to do that.
We have a motion and a second. I don't see any Commissioners angst set up to speak. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries 6-0. Commissioner Proctor out of the room. Okay, Mr. County Administrator, do we have any citizen comments? What's the protocol at this point?
We do not. They've all been associated with the items as I've announced here, and we do not have any additional comments.
All right, let me just say, I'll do two quick things, and then I'll pass it around real quick. I can't say how proud I am to be part of this organization. I tell people all the time, you can see what people are made of in the toughest times. I mean, bad things are going to happen, and we can't stop that from happening. But frankly, what's happened in the last month is you've seen across this community. So I mean, starting with this organization, Vince, you and your team have done an unbelievable job, and they all, in the reports we got earlier today, Chastity, you guys, Chastity's first meeting, this is the thematic of what she's been thrown into. But I've watched in the nonprofit community, I've watched in the faith-based community, I've watched OEV stepped up. I mean, we really, as a community, are stepping up and doing some great things, and I can't tell you how proud I am to be part of that. So this will be something a lot of us will tell our grandchildren about because it's a moment in time, but I'm convinced we'll come out of this stronger than we came into it. But with that, I had two minor questions, kind of, and then I'll pass it around. On the earlier thing relative to the alternate site, specifically when it comes to Salvation Army, can we, I have some concerns about what is congregate housing that we're trying to avoid. I think one of the primary reasons they're trying to basically eliminate what's going on at the Carney Center is because there's no way to keep people from congregating. So if Shinkton's, if you're the point person for the Salvation Army, and I would just say that to the degree that we can test some of those people so we can eliminate upfront maybe the need for them to even have that issue, but if you've got one person in there who's a carrier and they congregate, you're going to have, you know, a real mess on our hands. So, and these people are certainly in high-risk areas. That's just one quick thing. And then Chastity, could you just take two minutes and talk specifically about the curfew? We lifted the curfew because it was redundant, but I've gotten a lot of questions about why don't we put a curfew back in place? So I'd just like you to kind of clarify a little bit why we did what we did.
Sure. So what we did in our amended proclamation or continued proclamation 2020-7 was basically bring us back into cycle with the issuance of the executive order, the Stay For At Home executive order that was issued, 20-91, which was amended by 20-92. There is a provision in that executive order which provides authority for law enforcement to break up gatherings of 10 or more persons at social gatherings at any time of the day or night. So that provision is already something that is enforceable by law enforcement if we are not preempted from implementing a curfew, if that is the direction that the county wants to take in doing so. There are several governmental entities, counties around the state that have done so. Most of them are in, three of them, I think, are in South Florida, one is in Central Florida, and one is here in North Florida area. So it's really just whether the county feels like there is a need for a curfew in addition to what is already enforceable under the EO.
I would just ask real briefly, and this is the last thing I've really got, is there, I've gotten a couple of phone calls from people that feel like that there are still people out there and a curfew is something that everybody understands. The stay-at-home is confusing, and a lot of people think, well, I've got free rein to do what I want, but I'm certainly not, I'm not teeing this up and saying, I want to do this, I'm looking for a little bit of buy-in here or discussion. Commissioner Lindley?
Yeah, you know, I think we would be wise to try to re-implement that 11:00 p.m. curfew for the reasons you just said. It's very clear. It gives law enforcement, I think, just some extra emphasis on what our community is trying to do, which is take very seriously. I heard Mark O'Brien say, you know, he thinks that Sheriff McNeil is really taking this all to heart with enforcement, and I'm sure that Tallahassee police as well. But I would like to see us reinstitute the 11:00 p.m. I don't think it's overkill. I think it clarifies and emphasizes, and really, we can't do that too often. I mean, particularly, people are already talking about how we unwind and get out of this, and yet, on the other hand, it's saying, no, 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 not so fast. We really, really, really don't want to have a setback because we're too eager to get out of it. And I think this, right now, actually, is a good time to reinstitute that and say, no, it's still a very grave situation here. We don't want, we don't want people to think that the time has come to exhale. I mean, I would be willing to make a motion right now that we reinstitute the 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. curfew here in Leon County.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
I want a second, but it's just a point of clarification. Would it be?
Go ahead.
And it's either Chastity or the maker of the motion dependent, would there be like a limitation on how long that curfew would, like, be in effect?
County Administrator might want to speak to that. I mean, I'm assuming that kind of goes in tandem with our state or our county emergency orders.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
Go ahead, Chastity.
Sorry, do not mean to interrupt any of the commissioners. So our local proclamations are issued on seven-day cycles. We just issued one yesterday. So if the direction of the board is to reinstitute a curfew, we would issue an amended proclamation tomorrow to go into effect at the pleasure of the board, and that would be in effect until the next Monday, which is the time that we would enter a new continuing proclamation.
Okay.
So we, so my motion would be that that would continue, not just for this following week, but ongoing, as long as we have an emergency order in place by the chair, this would be part of it.
Right. And so I think.
That would be what I would assume, that I would like to do.
Yeah. Every week when we, when we renew the declaration, that would be part of it unless you guys decided at that point that it was no longer necessary.
And that would be my motion, I have to say, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, I would, I would second your motion.
Great.
Thanks.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Lindley. I got a second by Commissioner Jackson. I've got Commissioner Minor on deck. Commissioner Lindley, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Jackson, anything else for the good of the order here? Okay. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. County Administrator, you and I discussed this during my briefing. Can you, can you refresh my memory what the sheriff's comments were about this and what the effort was on the part of LCSO?
Yes. And I don't want to mischaracterize the sheriff because, as has been mentioned today, he has been, you know, just a staunch advocate of all the mitigation efforts and enforcement. I, I think it would be fair to say that he has shared the same concerns that other places that, that have not instituted the curfews have from a law enforcement standpoint, in that he has shared some concerns with, and I want to make sure I characterize this right, but perhaps that the, the enforcement of a curfew in itself potentially taking away from, from needed law enforcement resources. I think you, perhaps you've heard the governor at, at the state level make that same case. The reason I, I mentioned it to Commissioner Minor, I think, in our conversations was, was just to share some of the sheriff's concerns on that issue. But again, I don't, I don't want to.
I'm good, Mr. Carl.
I don't want to take away from the fact that he's been a, again, a very staunch advocate of all the mitigation efforts that are occurring.
That answer your question, Commissioner Minor?
It, it does, it does. I, I remember the discussion that the county administrator and I had. I actually had asked him, why wouldn't we reinstitute a curfew now that we have the flexibility from the governor? And that was the response that county administrator, the discussion that the county administrator and I had, which seems counterintuitive, right? You think it'd be simple, simpler to enforce a curfew, but I, I, I support it on its face, but I, I do, I do want to make sure it's something that the sheriff would believe would be most helpful to him and, and, and the, with the department. It, it might be something counterintuitive where it does actually divert his resources trying to enforce the curfew from where he has, he would otherwise have the ability to more effectively target use of those deputies to where he saw they most, might make the most difference.
Let me, let me, let me, let me offer a possible solution here. I, I brought this up because I think there's something to be said because the person, I had a couple of ministers pull me aside and say, people don't understand stay-at-home. It's way too confusing. When you say curfew, they get it, and they, they understand, they better get home by 11, they better not be out. That's pretty clear. I would offer, let's put it back in place and then, based on the motion and the second, and then let's have a discussion with the sheriff over the next couple of days. And if for some reason, when we renew the declaration of disaster, if he gives us, and I would yield to a large degree to what the sheriff decided, but rather than wait, I think sending a message is important. And I think frankly, it's very clear, as, you know, Commissioner Lindley pointed out, people understand curfew. They, stay-at-home is very confusing for the, I get questions all the time about what can I do, what can I do kind of thing. That'd be my offer at least, and I would support the motion as it's been presented for that reason. Yes, Chastity?
Clarification. So in the previous emergency declaration that the county issued, there were some parameters within which people could still move without during the curfew. Are those the parameters that the commission wishes to reinstitute as part of the curfew?
I would assume, Commissioner Lindley, is your, it's your motion. Do you understand the, did you hear the county attorney?
Yeah, yes. I would say, I would say yes to that. And I also would just say, respectfully to the sheriff, every time any ordinance or law is new and in place, ostensibly, it does add another object, another item for, for law enforcement to address. You know, I understand that. So I, I mean, I think it would be interesting to talk to the sheriff in, you know, the next week or so and see how it's going. To me, the emphasis, the necessity of making sure everyone's very, very clear that we are not, we are not saying, no, the time is now to begin relaxing. I think this emphasis is really needed, and the clarity of it is very important.
I agree. Okay. We've got a motion. I don't see anybody else up to speak. All in favor of the motion to reinstitute the curfew made by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. I would also say, the last go-around with the curfew, I did this unilaterally as chair, so I appreciate if this passes, y'all's support, but all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Do we have any opposition? Commissioner Proctor out of the room? Okay. Thank you. That, and that's it for me. Let's, let's go around the room if that's okay. Mr. County Attorney, anything for the good of the order?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So there were two memos that were circulated to the members of the board yesterday dealing with active and ongoing litigation matters. The first of which is a matter that the commission is very familiar with. It is Leon County versus Johnny Petrandis II at all. Mr. Petrandis and his entities have come back and made a subsequent settlement offer. It was offered on the 10th of March, but that was an insufficient period of time to get it before the board at its last meeting. Mr. Petrandis counsel did indicate that they would extend the timeframe for the board's consideration of that offer. It has been outlined in the memorandum that was circulated along with the various attachments. There was a closed attorney-client meeting in September of last year about this matter to discuss specifics. So I won't belabor the point, although there's a very good timeline to the foreclosure sale that occurred recently as attachment three to that memo. Basic premise of the offer is that Mr. Petrandis and his entities will dismiss the appeal and withdraw the objection to the foreclosure sale, which would allow the county to obtain legal title to the property subject to, subsequent to the foreclosure sale that occurred already. Mr. Petrandis and his entities would pay Leon County an additional $100,000 within 90 days, and the county in return would dismiss all claims proceedings against Mr. Petrandis and his entities and record satisfactions of any judgments that hold against him or any of his entities. The county attorney's office is recommending a counteroffer, in part because there is an amount of money that's owed in back taxes on the property over a several-year period. That information was also provided to the board as attachment five to the memo. There are questions also about whether there's an IRS tax lien that would attach to this property in the event that we are, in the event we are able to perfect the sale. And the county has incurred substantial costs associated with litigating this matter since 2003. That information is detailed in your memo, but I am available for any questions that the board would have and would seek, or direction on how to proceed.
Commissioners. Commissioner Lindley?
Yes, sir. As the county attorney said, we've been, we've been dealing with this since 2003. We've gone back and forth. We've spent, I think, more than a quarter of a million dollars in outside legal attorneys to dispute this. With respect to the county attorney's counter, counteroffer, I would like to make a motion that we accept Petrandis' offer and settle and be done with this. It's gone on and on, the idea of having, having this continue on, to me, is just, is just something we don't need, we just don't need to continue on with this. It's been years and years and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And although we might be able to get a little bit more money if we, if we accept the county offer, and I'm not 100% against the county offer, I'm interested in what others say, but for me, as I have felt for the last two or three years, every time this has come up, I say, we have got to bring this on home. We have to settle this. We cannot have it going into almost 20 years, almost 20 years. It's way too long. So I would make a motion that we settle with and accept the Petrandis' offer of settling.
So we have a motion, do we have a second? Is there a second? Okay. I've got Commissioner Dozier. The motion failed for lack of a second, if I understood it. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lindley, I, I hear you. It's gone on way too long. I'm also struck by the fact that on our brand-new county attorney's first meeting, we are also dealing with this particular issue that has gone on forever. It would be, when I saw the email come through, I was actually hoping it would be settled in your first meeting, Chastity. So I, I wish I could get there. I think we're going to take a loss, obviously, in some way in this scenario. I mean, I just, it's, it's gone on too long. However, I do like, if I've got all the details correctly, I like the alternative approach, looking at legal fees and a couple of other things. I, I don't want to accept the offer, but I feel like we're coming in for a landing. And Chastity, tell me if I'm right, but a, a motion to support your recommendations for an alternative settlement, that's what, or alternative proposal, how, how should I word that?
It would be a, a motion to counteroffer.
Counteroffer, thank you, ma'am. Okay. As recommended by the, our county attorney, I would like to make a motion for the county, for the counteroffer in hopes, Commissioner Lindley, that we bring this in for a landing very, very soon.
I'll give you a second. There's a second. Go ahead, Commissioner Lindley.
I mean, even with the counteroffer, it is in hopes that they, but they have not shown any interest over the years in settling on anything. So this is, I mean, I, I guess I'm, I understand what the, it sounds like the will of the group is, but it, it doesn't sound like this does anything but probably prolong it for an total amount of time. So, you know, it's sensible. I like the counteroffer. I think it's reasonable and fair from our side. But, you know, I, I, I think the word hope is, is operative here, that we hope it would work. I'm not confident that it will, that it will be accepted by the members.
Hey, I don't, I don't have anybody up to speak. I mean, Commissioner Lindley, I was kind of with you, but I wanted to hear what everybody else had to say, because I think, because this is all live, it's a little hard to negotiate, you know, in this kind of stance. I'm okay take, I'm okay if that's the will of the body to follow through with Commissioner Dozier's motion. Can you, Chastity, could, could you give us a timeline, gestimate? If, I mean, do we have?
Well, we would immediately go back to counsel for Mr. Petrandis and his entities, make the counteroffer in a state in time certain by which they would need to project or accept that. Give that information back. We could try to put a deadline of it in advance of the meeting on the 28th. That's a short period of time. They might need more than that.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Dozier to have the county attorney offer a counteroffer back or make a counteroffer, or to present a counteroffer, which seconded by Commissioner Minor, if I understand it correctly. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm so sorry. I got Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Proctor. My eyes are fading. Commissioner Maddox?
Just a quick, Mr. Chair, I don't want us to, if this is something that we're not absolutely ready to do or sure about, I don't mind us, you know, taking the time to slip back into a shade meeting to have a fuller conversation about what we're doing here. I mean, we got to be very sure about this. I mean, I, I, I mean, I like the recommendation, but at the same time, it seems like there could be some extra conversation we could have about this that could get us to a different place if we had time to talk it out as a board in a shade meeting. So I'm okay with either way. I just don't want to rush.
Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am at the same point as, and I would like to request, as opposed to us going through with a vote tonight, and I want to thank the county attorney for attachment number three, because what you, what you've given us on attachment three and four and those other subsequent documents, you give to us a complete timeline that shows a 17-year struggle, of which a private citizen has been up against the weight of their county's government. And for something which I was sitting here in 2003, when the county took a very active posture toward Mr. Petrandis cutting down trees, and I believe the allegation was that some gopher turtles or some kind of turtles was, their homes were destroyed and upset. This foreclosure, Judge Counsel Osteen, is in an amount of $491,000, a judgment of $418,000, and an additional interest rate of $73,000. All of this is for a property that has a value based on your attachment number four. The total value of these 87 acres is $185,762. So I'm unclear that we would go after a piece of property that'd be $306,000 upside down. And it makes no sense, and I'm not sure how we could ever, if we're owed this value of money, that we would take 17 years to pursue. And this has had four appeals, going in front of the District Court of Appeals four times, all have been ruled in the county's favor. But I am one who believes in private property. Some people believe in owning a gun. Some people believe more strongly in other amendments. But I am a private property believer. It's a part of the American way. And it is not in the spirit of government to, in my opinion, to take from this family properties that they worked for for many years. Now, I realize that the property taxes are outstanding, and I personally believe that the property taxes are outstanding because the property has been in limbo for 17 years. And beginning there, in the period of 2000 and, I guess, 14, there was a final judgment reached in 2016, and it was for $418,000 against Petrandis. Well, I wouldn't have paid no property taxes either. If I had to pay $418,000, so I don't think that there's a willful disregard for the payment of property. It's just that, why would you pay property taxes for something that the county has just been so persistent about taking from you? Now, taking property private, my understanding, General Counsel, is that we, as a government, don't take private property unless it's for a public purpose. I don't understand what the public purpose is for our taking of this private property. It's not for a coliseum that will serve the community. It's not for a stadium that will have the Washington Redskins football game. It's not for a road. It's not for anything that will have value to the property. Therefore, to me, this particular taking, it insults and it assaults all public policy which reflects that. We should not take unless it's for a public purpose. Secondly, we don't even have a comparison. This is unprecedented, what we have done. There is no comparison here. And then, thirdly, I invite each of you to do what I have done, to go down there and to, and to go through. to go down there and to go through those woods, and you tell me where this was, which was cut down in 2003. And if you tell me you see a cut tree or some kind of injury to that ground, I'm telling you, Commissioner, until you go down there, what the complaint was, that they cut down trees, and they didn't have a permit. That's the original complaint. But God has replenished that ground because nature has a reproductive process that itself reproduces and rebreaks. And the ground is totally regenerated. And before we do this, I think that we have to see and go and look at, and I would ask that our General Counsel take us down there. And you will see that not only is this ground healed, but sometimes, for some reason, when you cut back on nature, it comes back stronger than before. This thing has actually thickened, and it's more replenished than what it was. It's a more robust forest that the man cut it down than it was before. So if we are talking about, is the forest injured? Ain't none of us can find that that forest is weaker. It is, in fact, stronger. It's like burning the forest. When you set a fire to it, next spring it come out more luscious than it was when you burned it down. That is what has happened to this property. But if we want to get, oh, Nick, man, I'm jealous. What you got there, fella? Look at that.
Way to interrupt, Nick. There you go.
Great time. They gotta lost my train of thought, man. You're having so much fun. So I just say to us, that if we're talking about woods that got chopped down, that chopping helped them woods more than anything could have. It made it a more splendiferous wood. It's splendid. You gotta go down there and see it. Johnny Petranis helped them woods. He ain't hurt them woods. But if we want to go through and just show muscle, that we are mighty, and we can beat down the little man, because we the big government, that's y'all's choice. I'm not on board with that. I'd love to have a shade tree, and then bring the pictures of what I saw, on how sweet God has restored that piece of property.
All right, let me, let me take a temperature here, because I don't see anybody else teed up to speak. There's a motion on the floor that she present the counter offer. And then there's some discussion about a shade meeting. Can I get you to weigh in, maybe, and talk about how long would it take to put a shade meeting together if that were on the table?
Sure. So what I would need is authorization from the board to notice a shade meeting for the 28th. That's assuming that the count, the offer still stands, because it was extended to today for this particular commission meeting. So we could request an extension to keep the offer on the table. And it would be up to Mr. Petranis whether to accept that request for an extension or not, which would give us an opportunity to have a shade meeting. Just for clarification, to respond to some of Commissioner Proctor's comments, this was not a taking of property in the sense of eminent domain. The case arose out of environmental violations, which over time were not addressed by Mr. Petranis, in which case the court, after multiple hearings and proceedings, imposed fines, which over time have continued to accrue. And we've also incurred substantial attorney fees and costs in the course of that litigation. So just wanted to confirm and clarify, this was not a taking in the legal sense of Mr. Petranis' property.
Okay, I've got Commissioner Maddox and then Commissioner Proctor, but let's kind of bring them for landing.
Mr. Chair, did I make the motion, I believe?
No, I believe Commissioner Dozier made the original motion to present the counter offer. We haven't voted on that yet, so.
Okay, okay, all right.
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, on point. If, if I heard correctly, and we need to amend the motion to include the shade meeting, or any other direction we can do that, was that, forgive me if I misheard that?
I think it's either or. I think it's present the counter offer, or step back and go to a shady meeting and tell them we need an extension.
Okay, sorry, Chastity, I got that confused. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Lindley.
General Counsel, have you, have you been down to see the woods? Have you visited the site where the injury occurred?
I have not been on site.
And I'm pondering, has the court actually been on site to see these injured woods? Has the court visited the site?
I would have no firsthand knowledge of that, Commissioner Proctor.
Yes, ma'am. I remember when I was a little boy, and I didn't like the way my hair turned out. I need to tell you that, Commissioner Jackson, I didn't like my haircut. But my daddy told me, he told, I ain't messing with you. He told me one thing about hair, it'll always grow back. That's what he told me, that my hair will grow back, don't worry about it. And one of the things about this particular environmental violation, and Mr. Long will remember, Vince recalls, that this started over the man cut down the woods. And I can, I can tell you, because I've visited every speck of this 85 acres, looking for the harm, and what I can tell you all is that the hair done grow back. So if the judge want to take this man's property because he done some, I don't get it. In an environmental violation, some of them, time takes care of. In this instance, time has healed the land, period. So I would support, I will pin the break. There is no injury after 17 years. Time has healed this particular violation, and we should not, and I agree with you, General Counsel, this is not an eminent domain. And this one is slimier because it has no public purpose, but through an environmental violation, which nature, God, and rain have healed the land.
All right, Commissioner Lindley? You want to make a substitute motion?
I'm gonna vote against accepting or going for the county attorney's counter offer. But I would be willing to have a shade meeting so we could discuss some ramifications of this that, you know, we might, you know, benefit from. So I don't know if you're gonna do two separate votes on that, or if a motion needs to be made to have a shade meeting.
Do you want to make a substitute motion, which would be mutually exclusive of the counter offer, if you want to do that? I think that would, from a logistics standpoint.
I would make, yeah, a substitute motion for that.
All right, we have a motion and a second for a substitute motion to hold a shade meeting in lieu of a counter offer, okay? And I, frankly, I would be supportive of that, well. I think that's kind of, is the best of all worlds. Okay, Commissioner Maddox?
I mean, Commissioner Proctor gives us another botany lesson, but, no be it.
Well, it was about hair.
Mr. Chair, I, you know, I'm glad we're moving in the direction of a shade meeting. I think with a decision like this, especially in public forum, we need to be somewhat on the same page as we make the decisions. So I thought today we were gonna come at this thing unanimously. Then I would probably be in more so in the, in the vein of going ahead and moving forward in this forum. But the fact that, you know, there's a lot of conversation, a lot of questions here that probably should be answered in the shade meeting versus being in this forum. So I'm, I'm gonna support the substitute motion to have a shade meeting, and hopefully send that home across each other. We can come to a decision to move forward that can, that can bring a sense of finality to the decision.
Okay, we have a substitute motion for a shade meeting by Commissioner Lindley, which I think I seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposition?
I'll make, I'll make it unanimous for the shade meeting.
Perfect.
Yes. But, Mr. Chair, that means that we can, in a shade meeting, we could discuss a counter offer if we didn't, or other options, correct?
I assume so, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chastity is nodding, okay. Thank you.
Good discussion. Okay, one other item, yes, go ahead, Chastity.
One other item for a board consideration. There is another proposed settlement matter. This was a three-count complaint. The board was notified of this litigation fairly recently, back in October of last year. It related to alleged violations of Leon County Land Development Code for issuance of a building permit, and then also a count alleging a public records violation. So in the interest of a shout-out to the previous county attorney, Herb Teala, whose birthday is today. Happy birthday, Herb. I know he was watching earlier in the meeting, but I don't know, still with us. But this case did go to mediation. An offer was laid on the table, as the mediation was not accepted at that time. But County Attorney Herb Teala did approve the proposed settlement subject to Board of County Commission approval. And it's before you this evening for decision.
Okay, Commissioners, I don't see anybody... Discussion? You want to take the settlement? Let's, let's, I can't make the motion.
I move the settlement.
All right, we have a motion to take the settlement as it's been proposed. I have a second by Jimbo. Any other discussion? Commissioner Proctor, no tree, no botany lesson, though, sir.
Yes, sir. Obviously, General Counsel, this has been sanitized. And there are some things that, like the who, what, when, where, and why, 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 is not here. And I'm not sure what the nature and why, which has been sanitized. But if it's your recommendation, I will tiptoe with you all. But I don't like the spirit of, I don't like the, what, there's no transparency in this right here. And I don't even know what the alleged, something is missing. But I'll go with the, with the motion, because I'm trusting my General Counsel. And it's also, I'm trusting blindly on this one. That's all.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to support the motion, and I just wanted to make a quick comment. I agree with the statement in the memo, that 100,090 days, we have no assurance that we will ever get that money. The taxing issue, other things, is a problem. We are already, I know I'm not gonna convince the rest of you who want to go for the counter, for the settlement offer at this point.
No, I think, Commissioner, Commissioner Dozier, I hate to interrupt. I think maybe you're mixing the two different settlements.
Right.
We moved to the second one, which was the...
Wildheime versus Leon County.
Mr. Chair, it's been...
A long day.
Yes, it's been a long meeting.
Round the Wildheime.
I do know, Chastity just introduced the second issue. My mind's still going on the very animated monologue. I normally don't get to look at Commissioner Proctor while he's, you know, giving the monologue. And I will say, I may have been thrown off a little bit by cuteness that Commissioner Maddox brought in the room. So there's my excuse. I'll let you back to your good motion. Thank you very much.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. I don't see anybody else teed up to speak. All in favor of accepting the settlement as proposed by the county attorney, signify by, oh, Commissioner Jack, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, I thought you guys were gonna speak. I was gonna say, you're taking, you're killing me. Okay. Motion carries. Miss, Madam Counsel?
I have nothing for the board. Thank you.
All right, let's go around the room real quick, and then we'll come finish with the county administrator. Commissioner Dozier?
Back to me, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, this has been a very long, good, productive meeting. I will say, I like this format a lot better than what we use for blueprints. So I really appreciate all of the good discussion. Ms. County Administrator, the fantastic update from staff and all of our partners. Thank you. Chastity, great first meeting. Most unusual first meeting, you know, ever, I think, but well done. So, Mr. Chair, I did have two quick things I wanted to bring up. But first, I got one of the community masks. So this is from Jody Wilkoff, Commissioner Minor's aide, who's generously offered to sew some masks for our family. So we've got ours, and just want to give a huge shout-out to all the volunteers around the community who are making masks for TMA, for others in the community. This has been fantastic, and I can't sew, so this is really amazing. The other two more substantive things, Ms. County Administrator, I don't know if this is something that may be better coming up tomorrow, or may just tee up for the 28th, you let me know. But Florida Department of Ag has been doing a lot of work looking at supply chain issues. We've got farmers who normally send their products to restaurants, schools. They're closed. The demand is down. They're having a hard time diverting that product stream. They don't have the deliveries, other things, to whether food banks, prisons, whatever it might be. I've been keeping an eye on this a little bit. The programs are just starting to roll out, and I think there's some coordination that needs to happen. I did reach out to Chris Rito at Appalachia Regional Planning Council. This is not something that they're, they're working on yet, so I think it is rather early. But we are feeding so many in our community through Second Harvest. I know donations from grocery stores have dropped dramatically because all of us are staying home, and that was a huge, I'm sure, I'm speaking out of school here. Commissioner Minor could tell us all the details about this, I know.
No, you're doing well.
But I, I wanted to tee this up because it seems like being aware of what F-Dax is doing and trying to get that into our coordination, whether it's for Carney Center, Second Harvest, Salvation Army, whomever, could really benefit our farmers region. And certainly, the Planning Council, I think, could be a good partner with that. So I don't know if you need anything else by way of a motion, but I really just wanted to raise the issue to see if it's something that we could lean into a little bit and see if it could be a benefit for us.
Sure, and if I'm, if I'm getting that right, Commissioner Dozier, I mean, we'd be happy to follow up with Appalachia Regional Planning Council, and if we need to bring anything back to the board, but it may align with some of our, our current efforts or something like that, and in which case, we'd be happy to work with them.
Okay, I'm sorry. Planning Council is not working on this yet. It's something new from Department of Ag. On their website, they have a commodities list. They're just starting to build these resources. So those are commodities that used to go to restaurants and schools, and they're trying to get other buyers for those products, and divert those streams to other places that need it, because we're wasting food in the field, or the eggs, or whatever. So this can be a resource, yeah.
I can, Commissioner Dozier, I can tell you, there's a Palm Beach commissioner who's very involved in just this issue.
Yes, sir.
A big toe in the ag business, and she's talked. They're bringing in a lot of farmers and trying to figure out, how can we buy from them? Because these are all the people that sold to restaurants, and they are plowing millions of dollars worth of produce under the, just because it's going to waste. So, yeah, I would agree. And there's the North Florida Farm Alliance that we all have friends that are part of, that might have an interest in trying to figure out how, and if we can act as catalyst or offer them some, I think that's a great idea. Do you need a motion?
I don't think so. I think, I think that's good enough, and, and thank you for clarifying that. And if there is anything that needs to come back to the board, I'll be sure to do it.
Okay, cool. Good, good motion, good idea.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner McKinney has done a great job. I've been seeing her posts on Twitter and other things, and tracking this through the Commission of Agriculture as well. I don't know if Georgia has a similar program, but that could be someplace we could look as well, but definitely for Florida farmers. So thank you, Mr. County Administrator, and I did just send you a link to the website. The second thing I was gonna bring up, Mr. Chair, is something I've been talking with a number of our partners about. And I don't know if this is something we can move forward on, but, Ms. County Administrator, I wanted to hear your thought about this. We've got a lot of incredible programs from federal governments, state governments, other foundations, that are human service agencies, businesses, arts agencies, whomever could access. It's really hard to navigate that system, and for some small organizations, they may need assistance navigating the system, but also understanding what they qualify for. COCA, OEV, any, TCC, FSU, others have all talked about it. There was a webinar, I think, today for nonprofits from TCC, navigating the CARES Act. I'm wondering if this is an opportunity for us, and you tell me if this is better for our OEV conversations. our OEV conversation tomorrow. But I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for us to create kind of a, a task force of these organizations that are helping to distill the information. And we could even draw on Coad, or perhaps Domi could help, looking for a mentors network. What if we realigned our mentors network that we normally use for entrepreneurs to help small nonprofits or small businesses apply for some of these programs? Again, I don't, I don't know who else could take the lead, but for Coad, or OEV, or someone else, but I wanted to bring that up today to see if you thought that might be helpful.
Yeah, Commissioner, just to respond, I, I think that all sounds great, and, and obviously, the need is there, and OEV is currently working on, on fulfilling some of that navigation role right now. And I just think maybe if there was a discussion tomorrow, given that you do have the meeting, maybe they could identify for us a little bit about where they may see the gaps, and that may instruct us a little bit about where we might want to focus our energy if we need to do something a little more or convene this group. Certainly, we'd be wide open to doing that. But maybe we could get a little bit more information about what we're currently doing because I know we are acting as navigators currently.
I, OEV is doing an exceptional job, acting as that navigator. I think COCA, any, some of the others could help with nonprofits, arts agencies, perhaps taking some pressure off OEV, and, and spread this around a little bit, but shared information. So I will bring it up tomorrow, and thank you very much. Otherwise, I appreciate each and every one of you. I'm glad to see you from afar, and thank you for a great meeting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Okay, Commissioner Jackson, West Side of Town. Come on down.
All right, I'll be brief. I know that everybody's kind of ready. Vince, great job by you and staff, bringing the items and preparing us well for them. I hope I don't miss anyone. Claudia, Kevin, Shankton, Alan, Wanda, Chief Abrams, great report. Chastity, congratulations, you survived your first meeting. A big shout out to Commissioner Proctor. I'm in the education field, and I learned two very important things tonight as a lifelong learner. Splendiferous woods, and I, my hair still has hope, according to your dad. I'm excited about that. And a shout out to a 10 and 11-year-old who did not shout, fistfight, or chase each other around the house during the time that I had to conduct the meeting. I'm very proud of both of those.
Very nice.
We will have a battle royale shortly after I leave the meeting, but it's, it's great serving with you guys, and I appreciate it.
Perfect. Very nice. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, good job, Mr. Chair. I mean, this is a much better format, as Commissioner Dozier said, than the Blueprint format, but you know, the county always seems to do things the best, so hopefully they'll pull our lead and use this Zoom format instead of what they used last time. That was a little tough. Um, you know, we're all going through some hard times and trying to be here as best we can for our community, and I appreciate being on this board and leadership that each one of you show throughout the community. And Commissioner, Commissioner Jackson, I, I don't, I don't know if you can believe everything Commissioner Proctor said, especially when it comes to that hair, it might be done, but it just might be done.
Oh.
We, I think that today you guys did some very good work. I wasn't able to participate in the conversation, but I will make comment and say that I think that, that conversation was robust. Uh, when you spoke about the nonprofits and the direction that you went in was, was honorable, uh, and giving everybody, everybody an opportunity to do what they need to do with their applications. So I, as a, as a CEO of nonprofit myself, I appreciate the fact that you guys thought about it in that way, of giving all of us opportunity to, to go back and look at our applications. Yesterday, I officially became the dad of a teenager. I, I hear that there's going to be some trials and tribulations underway. Nyla, LaShayne Maddox turned 13 yesterday. It was fun. Yeah, we got her, she, she blew out her candles. She wouldn't tell me what she wished for, but she had a great day, and I was excited for her, so I just wanted to give her a shout out here on Facebook and every other outlet we're on to tell my baby, well, actually, I can't call up every girl. She's my oldest. Happy birthday, and I wish her many, many more to go. Thank you, Mr. Chair, again. Thank you. Great meeting. Look forward to seeing you guys on the 28th, and also participating in Shavy. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, too. Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you very much. Wow, you, you, Mr. Chairman, have really walked into being chairman of both Blueprint and our county commission in a historic year. And I want to thank you because you have really been, I know you've been working hard with the county staff. The county staff has honestly just blown my mind. Week after week after week, I get these reports. I mean, Vince must have been, you've written a novel already if you just compiled all your reports to the commission and to the public on all of the things that's going on in Leon County. I just thank you for your leadership. It's tremendous. And everyone on the team that, I have felt honestly so lazy in so many ways, knowing that you all are scrambling around constantly, 24/7, weekends, I say, have you had any chance for yourself? And the answer, I don't get an answer, so I'm assuming the answer is no. No time for relaxing, so thank you for that. This has been a really good meeting. I know we, we all have been kind of wanting to have our say to encourage our community, to help our community, to, to, to some extent reassure them that we are here and we're trying to, in every way possible, to assist during this really traumatic time, more traumatic for a lot of our citizens than we can even imagine. So, you know, thank you all for being such great colleagues. Nick, I think you're a great dad. You're always wishing happy birthday to your kiddies and your wife. It's good to have a teenager to keep you straight now, so it's good on that front. Thank you very much. Good night.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this was a great night, meeting, and we just can't say enough about our staff. Vince, you're the best. You're not just the latest, but you're the greatest of all times. And I want to say to our supporting staff, all the names that Commissioner Jackson lifted, awesome, awesome. We, we really can just be, we're blessed. And, you know, you have to pinch yourself, remain humble when your staff is as effective, efficient as ours. And this information tonight was incredible. My question about tomorrow, do we have a meeting on tomorrow? And if so, what is the format? And do we dial in, or what, what we supposed to do? Because my agenda book doesn't give me any direction. Can anyone help?
One o'clock tomorrow, and I know there should be an email with the dial-in instructions. My understanding is it's going to be WebEx, and to your earlier comments, I'm cheering that. I don't think I'm going to allow everybody to speak at the same time. You guys were rock stars, really. Nobody tripped all over each other, but with 12 people, it's really difficult to try and have a conversation. So that's one o'clock tomorrow, and everybody should have gotten an email with the dial-in information.
Ms. Chairman, are we discussing tomorrow? It was my anticipation that we'd be talking about nonprofits and potentially setting up a pool of $1 million for nonprofits, and it's probably late and I'm missing it, but I didn't see specifically a relief package for our nonprofit. Was that an intentional oversight? We not going to do it? Were we just posturing initially, or what?
Commissioner, Mr. County Administrator, you want to address that?
Sure, I can give that a shot. There, there's an item, Commissioner Proctor and Commissioners, on the agenda that's a follow-up from your previous meeting. The motion that you're referring to related to nonprofits and individuals didn't pass. However, the city commission took subsequent action, and we've reported that in the background of the main item. Obviously, the commission, or the IA in this case, can give the staff any direction you deem appropriate tomorrow. There is background information related to nonprofits, but specifically, it doesn't go as far as to bring back a proposed program in that that motion did not pass.
Okay, I just want to say that I think Commissioner Dozier and I had the most feedback on that point, and mine, of course, was simply, Ms. Administrator, I didn't like that we were not staffing the mayor's motion at that time. And it was not that I was not for setting up a million dollar to help nonprofits, it's just that I thought that we should staff it to make sure it was tight and right. And you understand that you, you, you were, that's our protocol. And I don't, I can't remember what Commissioner Dozier's objections was, if it was process-related or substantive, I don't remember. But mine was process. Huh? Pardon?
Go ahead.
So, I'm off the air?
No, you're, you're on.
Okay, okay. So I am favoring that the monies for our summer youth program, as well as the monies for the Lindley program for students and so forth, what is the status of that money? Have we pulled the plug on our summer youth program yet? And what, what can we do to re, reposition that money to be used?
Why don't we do, why don't we do this, Commissioner Proctor? Because we're going to get, we're going to go down to a new discussion. This is all for the I tomorrow, in my opinion, because that's, you're going to be talking about if there's a desire to do that, and if there is, how could we fund that? So rather than trying to take county staff off on this now, I think it's probably more germane, shoot Ben a note if you want, we can have that discussion when we open the meeting tomorrow, because there'll be ample time within the construct of the, the agenda for tomorrow, if that's, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, just in terms of our posture as a county, will we relinquish our monies to move in another direction? That's a conversation we didn't have, but I know that that money may not fulfill its purpose. We may not have a summer youth program. It seems that way. Christian, I want to thank you for my Black Panther cup. That thing hold about two gallons? Is, it holds, that's the biggest cup I ever, and I was trying to drink the thing, you know, like I was going, and that was a huge cup, and I don't know what you was trying to say to me, but I love the cup.
She should have said decaf.
It was incredible cup. I loved that cup, and it was just huge, and I, I love it. Y'all, we got this inmate release situation that I think was in today's paper. I think as a county commission, I'd like for you all to think, and, and I hadn't proposed anything about the potential for releasing low-risk inmates, nonviolent inmates, if they're misdemeanor inmates. But to look at spacing out inmates in our county jail, keeping them safe, and whether or not there's a role that this county commission can play. Ms. Osteen, I like to know, because I would love to encourage and be a part of that, that call for releasing people who, who just don't have to be in that death trap, a potential death trap, right now.
I want you to weigh in. Tell them. Commissioner Proctor, it'd be okay if we brought something back to you, but the Administrator may want to weigh in.
I will just tell you, Commissioner Proctor, our, our numbers are lower than, than I can remember in 25 years at, at this point. So, again, it's, it's the, the sheriff, and I got to give the state attorney a lot of credit here as well, in that they're working really hard on these issues, and it is showing with respect to the jail, not only the jail population numbers, but also, I need to give the sheriff and Steve Harrelson a lot of credit as to the mitigation that's ongoing within the jail walls itself. We're happy to get you a fuller report on that.
Well, as the PSC chairman, I typically get that report. I may have it, but I haven't been, this is my first time. I've not been in the county office in a long, so those numbers, I'm sure have circulated, I've just not seen it because I've not been in the county. So, Mr. Chairman, you did a phenomenal job tonight.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Commissioners, you all, y'all were commissioned, I was trying to keep up with y'all, you know? And you were racing fast, and, you know, I didn't want to be the slowpoke, but you guys really did well tonight. And to our county administrator, I'm nominating him to be the county administrator of the United States of America. And if anybody say anything about my county administrator tomorrow, I'm telling y'all now, I'm, I'm going off, and it ain't going to be pretty, and I don't want nobody talking about the hottest working man in the county administration of the United States, Vince Long, and his staff. All right, guys, thank y'all. Good night.
All right, go ahead.
I thank you, Commissioner Proctor, and you, you read it perfectly, exactly the way I gave it to you.
We've got Commissioner Minor to speak, but Commissioner Dozier, you had something to add to the mix before we got to Commissioner Minor?
I did. We've gone on to other issues after Commissioner Proctor's comment about Blueprint. But, and I agree with you, Mr. Chair, most of our discussion needs to happen tomorrow. I will say, in this context, I talked to the county administrator about this and thought it was appropriate to bring up with, with our commission, the push to dedicate any other assistance from Blueprint for utility funds, I think a lot of us commented on that, sorry, for utility funds, for utility payments from nonprofits or individuals. I'm, I'm struggling with that, and it's not just because we have a municipal-owned utility, it's the restrictions on that money. So I do think there's a little element there, unfortunately, about a city and county perspective that I'm hearing in this conversation. I hope we don't get bogged down in that, because I think in general, we agree that we want to support people as much as we can. It's just different ideas about how to do that. But for a Leon County perspective, I just appreciate the comments many of you made about the utility payments, and I do think we need to be careful not to restrict any OEV funding to just paying for utilities. It needs to be more general. So that was all, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I didn't mean to belabor the issue for today. We can save the rest for tomorrow.
Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy birthday, Herb Teal. Ms. County Attorney, congratulations. Got to the first meeting. From here on out, it's, it's easy street, so this is, this is a big one. Big shout out to our county staff. We use superlatives so often with them that they kind of, the, the effect kind of gets diluted, but that's, that's definitely not the case in terms of what they do. I mean, it's really an amazing job, from the county administrator all the way through the management team. Everybody's just doing it a tremendous job. Big shout out to our nonprofits. A great example is Second Harvest. I know how hard they're working. After a hurricane, it's all hands on deck for two or three weeks, and it's all hands on deck times 25 over there, as well as a lot of, a lot of other nonprofits. So, those, big shout out to Second Harvest and Madi Gelsworth, doing a tremendous job feeding the hungry and making sure that students who are no longer getting their school lunches are now getting food from Second Harvest. So, big, big shout out to them. Also, wanted to acknowledge all the parents out there who are now being educators, as well as trying to maintain their jobs, if they have jobs. I never quite knew how hard it was to teach a kindergarten, days and days on end, reading, math, and, and, and science. It's, I respected the teachers beforehand, of course, but I have a newfound respect for them. And then finally, the public. We know that social distancing works. We know it now. There's, there's rampant, plenty of evidence to, to prove that. People out there are doing what we need to do to, to get rid of this virus. There's some, people out there are some stragglers that are maybe not quite adhering to everything, but by and large, the vast majority of people out there are, are really doing what they need to. And so a big shout out to all of you to make sure that we can put an end to this as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Mr. County Administrator, Mr. County Administrator of the US, not last, nor least.
I'm so worn down at this point, I might accept. I don't want to do that. So Commissioners, you know, far be it for me to, to be the start off as the blanket, but I feel like I really ought to just put an extra note in here, because notwithstanding the good ideas and, and, and the good motions that passed tonight, and the good, all of the good intentions relative to funding, I would be remiss not to just add a little extra emphasis on the county organizational, financial. extra emphasis on the county organizational financial picture and the uncertainties there that remain. They're going to be significant. And so again, we're in a posture, our financial position, we're going to put us in the best position that we possibly can. But again, I just want to, I'd be remiss not to just emphasize the fact that, that we are in for very significant revenue reductions internally. And so I just want to keep, keep, keep that at the forefront and, and, and I know we'll be doing a lot of good work on that this summer. Commissioners, you, you said it relative to staff and let me just add my voice to that. They've been doing a tremendous job throughout this event and they continue to do so and step up in more ways than, than I can articulate. And I'm just so proud of them and so proud to be part of the team. Commissioners, again, thank you all throughout this. Mr. Chairman, thank you again for your accessibility throughout this. It's been tremendous. And Chastity, it may have been her first official week, but I can tell you, Commissioners, she's an old pro in one week. I don't know how that, or first official meeting, rather, and all the work leading up to this, it's been dog years with a multiplier. So she's been incredible and Chastity, I just wanted to congratulate you on your first official meeting. And finally, I just want to thank our amazing IT team for putting all this together tonight for us. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, stay safe. I will see all of y'all tomorrow on visually, I assume. Thank you guys again for a great meeting. Night. Thanks.